Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, February 8th, 2017, and the time is 7:04. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving right along. Item B on our agenda is Presentations of Awards and Proclamations. We do not have any, so we'll go right to Agenda Item C, which is Public Participation on Any Matters Related to Board Responsibilities. If anybody in the public would like to come forward, or if anybody would like to call in, our phone number is 860-665-8736. Please state your name and address.
Rose Lyons, 46 Elton Drive. I was here for a TPZ meeting. Actually, I'm going back down there, so don't take offense when I leave, but I had to come up and say hello. It's budget season, and it just doesn't seem right not seeing your faces, looking at what's in front of you, and trying to figure out how you're gonna make it work. Mady and I came for many years, and we're the only ones sitting here watching during this time. And I thank you for the written documents that you're providing the public. I think it's very helpful for them. I know it would've been helpful for us. We haven't given up on ya. We just, we'll wait till the end, 'cause we get it, how many times it changes, and our heads just spin. And you know my feeling on Facebook, but today on Facebook, there was a discussion, or last night, about when did the school policy change as far as pickups for children in kindergarten and so forth and so on? Some man was complaining because three houses on Dowd Street, they stop at each house to pick up the children. The bottom line is, if anybody has anything to say or any questions, I always say, "Call the Board of Ed," or I don't even know, is Allen still with us? Allen Avery at the bus garage? Well, anyway, it drives me crazy. So I just had to come and say, "Please, if anybody's watching this, would you just call the superintendent's office and get some answers, instead of conjuring up all kinds of reasons as to why this is happening or not happening?" Dr. Collins, you're damned if you do, and you're damned if you don't. Thanks for canceling school tomorrow, and I have to go through that. They all know they don't have to get up and stuff. It just, my head spins. And it was interesting to see that the police department is gonna now start accompanying some of the kids on field trips and things like that. No, they're not? Okay, we'll leave that be. That was another big discussion. And this has nothing to do with anybody around this table, but I am a woman that likes to write letters with Mady. And we haven't written letters in a few years, because I've come to the realization that Facebook unfortunately is the new form of communication. But there seems to be a disease spreading around in this town, where if people don't get an answer, or they don't like the answer, they go to the news stations. And I'm begging people in Newington, do not do that. Please, go through the proper channels. Can you imagine what people think when they see that on the 11 o'clock news or the 6 o'clock news? Whatever it is, whatever the issue is, it shouldn't be out there. I'm old-school. You keep your problems within the house, keep your problems within the town. People living in the town are disgusted with what's happening. People outside of the town are wondering what the hell's happening in Newington. So, with that all being said, I'll go down and see what's happening with TPZ. Thank you. Be careful tomorrow, and good luck with the budget. We'll see you at the town council meeting when you present it.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wishing to come forward? Hi, if you could please state your name and address?
Yasi. I live in Newington, here in Newington. I come from CCSU, I don't have any, no problems. I think you guys are doing an excellent job. But we have a problem with the academic achievement gap. And we are organizing an event at CCSU, some type of conference. And we're gonna have keynote speakers, and we're gonna be presenting research we're doing at the center, over there, at Latino Center. And the reason I'm here is to invite anybody that is interested in attending. It's open to the public, and we are considering panelists. If anybody's interested, I have some flyers here, yes. And it's specifically about the academic achievement gap among Latinos, which is a big, big, big issue. April 26th, yes. And the new president of CCSU will be part of the conference.
Thank you.
Thank you for your cooperation. Let me know if you have any questions.
Any other members of the public wishing to come forward? Okay, seeing no other members from the public coming forward at this time, we're gonna move to Item D on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. Mr. Facella, if you could please read that motion?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Can I have a second? Second by Mr. Tofel. Tufel.
Too many meetings.
Sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Item E is Old Business, we do not have any. That brings us to Item F on our agenda, which is New Business. And we do not have any committee meeting. Well, we just had a Curriculum Committee meeting. Would you like to do a report on the curriculum?
Sure, I could do a quick one on that. Ms. Freeman tonight, who's the high school coordinator, presented the Mastery-Based Learning Program that Newington is starting to get into. And it makes a radical change from the standard curriculum grading that we did. And as I said when I left the meeting, it's gonna take me another meeting to get my head wrapped around it all. So, not being too specific, but we will get minutes out on that as we go along. But it was an interesting meeting, and really looking at grading the students on their actual learning, and bringing the learning side of it into much more critical looking. If anyone else on the committee wants to jump in, I think that's basically what we're...
I would just add that it's not, by no means anything that's immediate.
Oh, yeah.
That this is arching over several years' time of building practices with teachers, and buildings, and families. So this is kind of the start of where the district is looking to, and there's some legislation at the state that's kind of tracking along with it as well. So, something to keep an eye on for the future.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ancora? I wasn't at the meeting, so I really can't speak, you know, with that much knowledge. But my first reaction is, it sounds horrible, and I'm really nervous about it. I would like to come to the next meeting to hear about it. As a mom of a high school student, that's not gonna go over very well, especially kids applying for colleges. So, that's just my gut reaction. I will keep an open mind.
Long time in coming. It's nothing that's gonna happen tomorrow, as Josh said, but it's...
The people who were at the meeting, well, I had a very similar reaction when I walked in the room. And I took a step back, and like they said, I think it's gonna take a lot of us a long time. It's gonna be a long process. And just being at the meeting already made me feel a lot better about the direction it's going. And it's just gonna take a lot of time and a lot of education. And I think it'll be helpful when we hear more about it, okay? No, 'cause I had a very similar reaction. Yeah, at the high school. Again, because you know why? We have children in high school who are looking at colleges right now, and being asked about their GPAs, being asked about their grades, college coaches. And so, we're thinking, "How is that gonna impact this, this, and this?" But the good news is, we have terrific administration who is thinking all of those things through, and going to help us wrap our arms around it.
Right, remember, this is going to have to be a large pocket of schools in the state that move in this direction. Anyone's school isn't gonna be able to do this, you know?
That was one of the points that we made.
Right, it is gonna take a while. When we did it at the elementary level, somewhat easier, of course, but it still was very painful for parents.
So when you get together with other superintendents, is it something that's gonna be discussed?
Oh, we do all the time. We've been discussing it for quite a long time. There actually is legislation now on the books that does allow for it. That's, like I said, there's also legislation that requires 25 credits. So, it's a very slow process. The other legislation needs to be removed, so the other can take over. And then it's still gonna take quite a while for that aircraft carrier to move, you know? And we're typically leaders in the area. This may not be one that we are right out in front of, but you know, as districts start moving in that direction, you know, we would like... It makes a lot of sense when you really think it through. The biggest issue is gonna be working with the post-secondary, and making sure that the colleges are in sync with you, 'cause that's the biggest...
That was our concern.
That's been our concern along, and that's what's held us back for so many years on doing what's right. 'Cause getting the whole K-16 system, or you know, in line.
To be continued.
Yeah.
Thank you, yes. Thank you, thank you. Okay, we are going to... Okay, right, before we go into Number One, which is to continue our discussion on the budget and all the different program reviews, I believe, Dr. Collins, you had a couple updates from questions that were asked yet last night, so...
We have some of them for you. Some of them are easy, some of them we're still working on. One was the box of pencils, I think we took care of that. All right, that was mine. Flowchart we are working on, we're gonna get to that one. This one we're working on. Oh, Lou, I believe you have the blurb to explain the breakdown of non-serviced salaries? You have that? Oh, draft, okay. So we'll do it for next meeting. But I did see a draft, and it has all of the things clearly articulated. We'll probably send it to you as soon as we can. Special Ed, I know we have special ed, outplaced, and magnet students? Of the special ed outplacement tuition, as of right now, this fiscal year, there are 25 magnet school students that have a special education component of their program that we're responsible for, and that totals $222,000. That is on top of the regular tuition we have to pay through the Board of Ed account, which is the base $5,000 a student, on average, depending on which school they're going to. So, this is what costs the magnet schools hand back to us, based on the special ed activity, the IEPs, and any other accommodations that they choose to provide, or agree to for extra support, one-on-one tutors, whatever the students' needs happen to be.
Any further questions for Lou? Mrs. Braverman, Dr. Braverman?
Lou, wouldn't that we have to pay that if they were in our district anyway, except for the crack tuition?
You might, but we don't really control the PPT to the same extent we do locally. Since the student is at the magnet school, if a parent asks, it's, I wouldn't say a more permissive environment, but you don't have the other support structures we have in our district. So what they are suggesting may be, we may be able to deal with it in a different way if it was in-house here, because of the support network we have in our buildings. You know, really, they're, I think, really the only option they have are one-on-one tutors for kids that have significant needs. They don't have any of the other pull-out programs, because the school's not geared for that. There are also four outplaced preschool students. And that's something we typically would not do, right, from preschool? You know, unless it was absolutely necessary. Try to keep them in their home schools.
Lou, do the parents know the difference between special ed and crack and special ed here?
I've never sat through one of those PPTs to be able to be certain about. I don't know if any of our other administrators has, you know, that could provide better insight.
I've attended many of those PPTs. The difference between crack magnet schools and ours magnet schools is we have more of a continuum of services at our public school levels. So we're better able to service some of those children in our district more cost-effectively than they are normally. So when a child needs a service there, they need to add staff or add people to service that, hence charging us for that service. So it is more cost-effective for us if people stay in town and get their services through our special ed department.
That's the ironic part, because the resks were designed for regional consolidation and saving money.
It's very frustrating when you're sitting in those meetings, it's very frustrating.
Lou, could you give us that total again? 25 students, $222,471, to be specific. Right, that's part of the element of the overall...
Right, so we can subtract the 22 from the tuition line in... 560 is the total, the line, the special ed budget, the line item 560. That, we talked about that last night, that's the total, it's big costs with the magnet schools and the outplacements.
Correct.
Correct, so we subtract the 222. That's what, that other number is what is actually the outplacement, special ed facility.
Right, the grand total of the outplacement is substantially more than that.
Yeah. Yes, we understand.
Mr. Schellman?
When we talk about having 54 kids that are outplaced, that's separate from these 25 kids in the magnet school?
That's included.
So the 25 are included in that?
Yes.
So the 29 that we've, that we have outplacement tuition for are somewhere over $2 million?
I would say so.
So like $90,000 to $100,000 per student?
Oh, yeah.
But I mean, that's the number, right?
Emily?
When preschool students are outplaced from a magnet school, do we, do we have anybody in those conversations as far as what we can provide in town? Or if we're putting the bill in the end, and that's one of the things that we provide?
I know. Do we, can we? Yes. Parents get, as you know, familiar, comfortable with the school that they're in, and the people who are in it. And so, sometimes we're seen as outsiders, coming into their school, making suggestions, and it doesn't always work. But we haven't really seen this level of outplacement before, I haven't anyway, this magnitude. Anybody? No, yes?
Cindy?
I'm just glad of the breakdown, because in my head, when I hear 54 outplace students, that's astronomical to me. But now that I realize that 25 of those are really magnet school kids, in essence, we have 29 outplacement students, which is still many, but it makes more sense to me, okay?
Correct. Also, just to clarify one point on that. We've had 65 cases go through our excess cost tracking system this year. Some of those fall out every year with kids who start and get returned to district or leave. So, 54 is the number we're at right now. And I believe the prediction is 60 for, right, 60 for the fall.
Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. So, when the magnets or crack schools need this additional service, do we have any input or ability to offer the services that we have available to the magnet school to offset that additional expense or such? Or do we have any ability to understand the cost components and negotiate those costs on behalf of our students? Or is it just like, "Oh, I'm gonna accept the bill because they're there"?
They have a rate sheet, they send us a rate sheet, and we have to pay what their going rates are, which are usually higher than...
But we can't step in and say, "Oh, by the way, I have a counselor that we can provide," we can't cross the line?
No, they belong to the magnet schools, and magnet schools are responsible for those services. And our, the appropriate people we have in district can barely, you know, they're doing what they can to service the children who stay in district. To have them going to all these magnet schools would be, it would, there's so many in the state, people don't realize how many there are. To travel all over the place to service them, it wouldn't be feasible. But also, that's not how the system works. They have, they have their fees, they give us a list of what the fees are, depending on whether the child needs an evaluation, or whether the child needs, you know, a speech and language, or they need special ed, or counseling, or social work. They tell you what the hourly cost is, or the evaluation cost is, and then you...
Is there any opportunity to cap it? No? No, and to make things matters, to rub salt in the wounds, if you will, conversely, the students who we intake, we do bill hard for. However, the amount of money we receive in tuition has to be deducted first. So we have to use up all of that tuition money that we would receive first on services, and then we get to bill. So, or the other way, we have to pay the tuition, and then we have to pay on top. We're incoming, we have to subtract from the tuition that we would, the revenue we receive, before we can start charging.
One additional question on this particular section. The line item, $600,000 credit. Given the wonderful news today, will that line item be necessary to adjust? Or should we anticipate that it will be adjusted?
This way of budgeting always makes me very nervous, budgeting in a net amount, for that reason exactly. Because you're guessing at what's going to be in that. It used to be just a pot of money, and you never knew how much, how many special ed students were gonna be in the state, taking out of that pot of money. You're talking about a whole new system, and based on a community's wealth, and you're talking about 0% to 55% of the costs. So, there's no way to do the math right now. So it's very, very unpredictable. We don't know where it could be. I doubt we would be in the zero range, you know, getting, but I don't know. Right. And just following what the Business Manager's blog was doing today on the subject, one of the major concerns that they believe is in the legislation that's proposed is that that entire special ed grant will go directly to the town, and not be a circuit breaker for the benefit of the Board of Ed for the high-cost case. So, really just be like ECS grant number one, ECS grant number two. And then we would be needing to justify every dollar for catastrophic costs out of our budget. Well, no, if it's like that, then we, if, 'cause we get no, we don't get the ECS money, we don't get the adult ed money, we don't get the transportation money, we don't get any of that. So you would have to add $600,000 into your budget. If that was the case. I mean, I don't know if that's absolutely certain, but that was the buzz that was out at 5 o'clock today.
That was basically the purpose of my question, because I was reading the same blog, I believe. And my interpretation was, if it goes to the town, I mean, okay, money's coming somewhere, but you're, we're taking a $600,000 credit.
That's how, right, that's how we budget for, that's how we budget with town.
'Cause, I mean, the changing, this changing of the rules midstream, which is, I'm sitting here going... I'm just, I'm asking, maybe it's more of an awareness that we're gonna be coming up going, "All right, we're $600,000 short, because the money got transferred over to the town's account, where we were anticipating that it would be in the BoE account," right?
Correct, right.
Okay.
This is the only grant that is a current-year circuit breaker-style grant, which is designed to step in in those very volatile situations, where you've got 10 new placements at $100,000 each, and the board's budget is not prepared to handle that kind of volatility. So when they have the, either the DCF level of one-time-year student cost, or the local placement at four and a half times, it does insulate the board from tremendously detrimental circumstances, because you can't react, and if we ended up with a half-million dollars of new outplacements from now to the rest of the year, where do we go? Do we have to lay off teachers in the middle of the year? I mean, what sort of, it doesn't seem like that's even a plausible strategy that's being proposed by the government, but who knows at this point? A lot of school districts don't budget a net amount, they just budget for the full amount. And then they use that as your contingency, I guess. But that's not the way we've done it. Right, that has to be a consent arrangement with the town. Oh, absolutely.
You're welcome.
Okay, the athletic, we don't have that yet, we'll get, we will get that, Karen. There were a couple of questions I had, I remember we were flipping pages. And, right, so what we're going to do, the items have to stay the way they are. We're going to rearrange the budget books next year by how the budget is arranged, by sequence. So we won't have, we'll just flip to the next page. Simple thing, but, all right. That's the way we're gonna do it, though. It's just easier. It's an extra fix, but nothing we can do about it now. And the last thing I have on there was a question about transmission of executive session on Monday evening, and Bluetooth, and voices, voices being heard. Okay. I don't have an answer for you, I don't know, I guess I would need to have follow-up questions, like where did all come from, and...
So, there was no question posed? Dr. Collins, it was just a point of information I was sharing from what my technical team told me.
Okay, so technically, maybe give a little more, so I can check it out. Bluetooth, I got the Bluetooth part. And transmitting to where?
My technical team told me that the...
Who's your technical team? What do you mean by that?
I have individuals that work with me, and for me, in what I do for a living. And so, the individual that I interacted with informed me that people that had their mics on, which I don't know who, during our executive session, that the Bluetooth waves, basically, my interpretation, it was Bluetooth, that's my interpretation. Was that between the microphone and the police scanners, the police scanners were picking up conversation. So that was the information shared with me, and I just wanted to make an awareness. I don't know where it's coming from, or how this system is designed. So, I have no information to share on that.
So this would be in the police frequencies that were going out?
That, correct. It was a police scanner...
Police scanner, okay.
Frequency. I don't know what frequency they use, I don't use police scanners. So, and I was here, so I have no idea what the heck was going on.
All right, do we know if anybody heard it? Obviously, somebody did.
The information I was told was that they heard three female voices, that they could discern, and one male voice. That's all I know.
Okay. I can check, I guess, I can check with the police department. They would probably keep records of your scanners.
So I don't even know if the police scanner system has records, or logs, or WNV files, or whatever types of recording mechanisms. I have no idea what our system does.
Okay, so there was confidential information that was discussed, if I recall?
This was Monday.
It was a real estate session.
We were in an executive session.
Real estate session, right? Right, it was. So I guess that can be problematic on, I mean, who heard it? Do we have any idea who heard it? I guess? No? People listen to scanners. Scanner apps?
An app for that?
Okay, I will look into it and see if there's anything we can do.
All right. That brings us back to discussion item number one. So we will continue, I think we left off, with 2A, Health Nurse Services, and I think that's gonna be Mrs. Maraca.
It is. So you're going to turn to your third yellow tab, which says Health Nursing Services. On your left-hand budget page, I'll draw your attention to the major goals. The major goal of the Health Nursing Service is to promote safe and healthy community, that means within our school and the greater Newington community, and to facilitate positive student responses to normal development, and to also intervene in actual and potential health issues among our students. In the description, you'll see the roles and responsibilities of the Health Nursing Services Department. And I'll just highlight a few for you. One is that they provide annual vision screening in grades kindergarten first and third through fifth. They conduct at the middle level in grades five through seven postural screenings, often known as scoliosis screenings, for female and male students in grade eight. They also have a great deal of responsibility for health reports, such as the Health Immunization Survey, the state mandated asthma incident reporting in grades K... The state mandated asthma incident reporting in grades K six and ten, as well as yearly health services survey for the State Department of Education. The nursing staff also participates as appropriate in planning and placement team meetings, and 504 meetings with other staff and administrators from the Special Education Department. And they also are responsible for annual training in such things as the EpiPen auto injectors, which we know are costing us, you'll see on the right hand budget page, some money. And then hands-on CPR, and also, they often get involved in Heimlich with some of our cafeteria employees as well, should a student be choking. Program improvements, there are really none, the program has maintained itself. In the future, there are a couple of future needs, the first bullet is one that you've probably seen, at least I've seen, I think, since nineteen ninety-nine. Which is a request to use the one float nurse as a permanent staff, which means they would be given a contracted position versus their current position, which is non-contracted, which means it doesn't have benefits with it. They also have some high cost items that wear out or need refurbishing or replacement, and those are such things as scales, some of the cots that you'll see in our health facilities, wheelchairs, audiometers, and digital thermometers. We also have a request to look into the possibility of renovating the health room lavatories at John Patterson and Anna Reynolds. Because they do not allow access for our students who would be in a handicap device of any sort. So even if they were using a walker, they could not get into those lavatories. So I'll show you on the right hand budget page what that looks like financially. If you go to the very bottom where it says total other expenses, you're going to see that we really are about five hundred dollars less than the current year appropriation. And that plays out basically going right back to the top. If you look at the three hundred category, you'll see in three thirty, three twenty-five, that there is six thousand six hundred dollars. That is the salary for our district physician, and the physicals that are provided by the school district. Your next cost is in five ninety-nine contracted services. That's for calibration of our audiometers, as well as our Sharp containers, which is where we use for any syringes or needles. In six ninety, again, we have twelve thousand nine ninety-seven. I will tell you that seven thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars is for EpiPens, which is, which are state mandated. So we have no option but to have those. And then the remaining five thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars in this line item is for helping services consumables, Band-Aids, antiseptic, gauze pads, all of those day-to-day supplies that a school nurse would need. Covers for a thermometer, et cetera, that they would need to be able to take care of our children on a regular basis. And in the last eight hundred account, there is one thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and that is for nine memberships for the National Association of School Nurses. And then the four hundred and fourteen dollars are some legal documents for compliance and law around school nursing. So are there any questions about this program?
Mrs. Ancona?
Thank you. With the rising cost of the EpiPens, generics did come out because of, you know, the huge increase, are we getting the generics now, or are we getting the brand?
I cannot answer that question, I would have to check with Mercy Heatherington, our nursing staff administrator.
All right.
She put this budget together October, November, so if they were available then, I would say yes. If they were not, then she may not have been able to account for that in this budget.
It's, it's really much, much lower than the new ones, my daughter needs an EpiPen, so.
Yeah. I'll, I'll have her investigate that, thank you.
One more quick question?
Yes. I just was wondering, the asthma reporting, what, it seems like I get a million forms about the asthma. What do they have to do to report to the state? What are they doing?
There is actually a sort of a record-keeping database that they have to enter that data into. So it's a matter of how many asthmatic students you have, when Lou has air quality inspections, that we've made sure the air quality is there, how many of them use different types of medications. So it's just a state-required form that they must complete, and it is time-consuming. Because each school nurse has to complete that, and then Mrs. Heatherington has to complete the district report as well.
And one more question, I don't know why I'm on this topic tonight. The handicap accessibility for the bath, those students are going to the nurse now, that can't use a walker in the regular bathrooms.
What, it's twofold, students without any physical disabilities can use, when they're in the nurse's office, can use the lavatory that's within the health office. If I am a student in a motorized vehicle or a wheelchair, what happens is I end up using the handicap bathroom that is closest to the health room. Because I can't get my vehicle into that bathroom. That Patterson, that's very far away.
Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. So I'm, I'm going to continue on with the sort of the general theme I had last night. I recall from last year's discussion that the, we had a metrics basically of having a nurse per facility. And, and we have nine. And, but I also learned last year that we also provided services to our Christian schools that are here. We now have one less school in the district. So I'm wondering about the metrics here, is that, do we still require the nine, or that? And I do have some follow-up questions.
I did ask Mrs. Heatherington back in the fall about that question, she said yes. Actually, she felt they had been understaffed at Newington High School, so frequently that nurse, if not needed to support in another school, is used at Newington High School.
I think I can draw your attention to, if you remember my budget presentation, I talked about the demographics and the breakdown of students. Medically fragile and so on, if you really look at those numbers, just in a shift, I think I did ten years ago, five years, and then one year. You'll notice the increase in the number of students with, with needs, special needs, and a variety of different needs. Is drastically increasing, and we haven't increased our nursing staff. Matter of fact, I believe we had one more, I believe at one point we.
Earlier?
Yeah.
So the metrics we're utilizing are the number of special needs students?
No. We are, we, we have a nurse for each building, we have, we have medically fragile children in each building that do require nursing services. So they're, otherwise, we'd have to put them all into one building, and that wouldn't be appropriate, especially at the elementary level. We have, if you just look at the number, the metrics we're using are the number of students who have desire, have needs. And if we use those same metrics, we should have, we should have, probably, I would say, three more nurses. But we don't, we haven't added them in there.
Also, for clarification, the nurse that supported Saint Mary's School was not a full-time nurse. I believe it was two days, or two and a half days? Halftime for Saint Mary's. Two half, at Emmanuel Christian, and the rest was at the high school, so now the high school's just absorbed some of that time.
Mrs. Ancona?
Are there instances where there is no coverage?
Yes, there are when we have, if it's flu season, unfortunately, our nurses are not immune to disease and illness. So if we can't find a school nurse who can cover, we do have to ask our current nursing staff to be on call. So that they can cover a school that may not be able to get that substitute school nurse.
And in some cases, we've had to go to a service.
If the nurses are traveling, is, I don't see on here travel expenses.
It's because it's by the day, the only time we include travel is if they travel during their workday. So if the nurse that goes to Emmanuel Christian goes to Emmanuel Christian on Tuesday morning and stays there, we don't pay her, that is her time. But if she were to go to Emmanuel Christian on Tuesday morning, and at twelve noon go over to the high school, then we would pay her. But we're not doing that, I don't believe this year.
Okay.
I don't believe so this year.
Annually, our nurse administrator, Mercy Heatherington, kind of reevaluates where the needs are, the greatest needs, and how to manage that with the nursing staff that she has. This year, a nurse does spend one full day at Emmanuel Christian, so there is not travel involved.
Mrs. Stan, oh, sorry.
Um, so, the, this one point, full-time permanent float, she's in the nine count, but she doesn't get the, she doesn't get the salaried position pay, is that true, is that? Is she in that nine?
No.
So she's just a part-time in another. And I just want to advocate, I'm going to tell you, this fall, on my nursing, I did not have a nursing supervisor, so I became the nursing supervisor. And after becoming the nursing supervisor, I see how vital this, making this permanent float a full-time position is. It's vital to the coverage of the district and the needs of the district. And when we're talking about medicine dis, dispensing, and the fragile students, and how many children go to the nurse's office on a daily basis. Those nurses are flat out, and it is, and we have so many more diabetics in the, just in any district that you cannot leave schools uncovered, not covered, because of the liability of that, and things that could happen. So I understand budget times, but I'm going to tell you that her asking for that position is not an outrageous request.
She's asked for it every year, and Pat, every year before that.
Right. A, a couple of follow-up questions, if I may? Along Cindy's questions, so this, this individual that we want to move from a permanent float, is her salary within the item one twelve? Okay, so even though she's not one of the nine, her salary's covered within the request?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. The next one I had was that, you mentioned that we don't have ADA facilities at Anna Reynolds or John Wallace?
We have bathrooms that are ADA compliant, they are just not contained within the health nurse office.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, I appreciate that, so that had me a little off-center. So, all right, so are Anna Reynolds facilities are, do have ADA compliant facilities available to our students?
They do have lavatories that are handicap accessible, yes.
Okay. Now, and then I want to come back to this air index quality, AIQs. And I know that the topics come up a little bit after you save the bell and some of the comments here. Do we have a series of reports of our facilities, and specifically Anna Reynolds, so that we can allay some concerns with our parents? I mean, if we've been doing it for this, and, and the reports, I would love to try to get that information out to our constituents as fast as we can to help calm the waters.
Sure. The, since two thousand eight, we have been involved in green cleaning program, which we use tools for schools from the EPA. And we do that every year religiously, it's done every single year, Lou can speak to it. I know the surveys go out every year, every room is evaluated, every office space is evaluated. Ceiling tiles are changed based on that, there's, we're out of the loop, kind of take it, but a variety of things happen because of that, that's done every year.
The air quality program we have in the district is actually done twice a year, at the transition from heating to cooling, and then cooling to heating. The reason behind it is if there are incidences of equipment that's not working properly, or new and emerging problems, we'd like to be able to get out in front of that as quickly as possible. The way the program is operated is we've actually built a email-based blast to every staff member of the district. And asked them to report back in a prepackaged format. Certain conditions and prompts about their classrooms, like we asked them to look at their ceiling tiles, do you see any spots anywhere? Is there any frost on a window? If you have sinks or any other piping in your classroom, do you have any spots on the carpeting underneath? Do you have any evidence of rodents or other things happening in the room? So we have a whole series of eleven questions that address all of these. With the electronic responses all dropped into a database, sorted and formatted for us, we're, we have an actionable report immediately at the conclusion of the survey period. Over the next two to three weeks each cycle, Dick Vea, as our supervisor custodian of maintenance, will take that list back to the principal with the head custodian, and if necessary, appropriate maintenance personnel, like if it's an HVAC issue. And they will have a roundtable in the building and sort out what issues are real, and which ones may be transient issues or not significant. And they will prioritize, they'll do what they can. If something requires, say, a replacement of a rooftop unit, that's obviously beyond the scope of what a building principal, a custodian can address on their own. That would have to get into our CIP process, or into our annual budgetary maintenance request list. And when we do that twice a year, it's been very, very well received.
And I appreciate the explanation. You know, coming back, I think what I'm, I've been picking up is, is that, and I know that Cindy and Robert were on some correspondence, that, you know, there's, there are, there's a there's an interest in at least understanding that our schools' AIQs have at least been performed, and we've got the reports on it. So that, thank you very much, Dr. Collins, I appreciate that.
And I do want to make one correction, one thing I picked up as well, because I did receive a copy of that email. And one of the things in our EDO five O says that we, we do not have a program, I don't know, that, that, obviously an error. It's listed in the O five O as not having an air quality program.
Yeah, that's incorrect.
Right, we've done this since two thousand eight, so. Correspondence I had with the parent, she said, you know, you don't have it. And I looked on the O five O, and she's right, it says we don't, it says we don't do it, but, but we do, we do.
Right, we did actually enter that document that was transcribed to the state, we sent them paper copies, and they did that, so. I don't want to say it's a data entry error, but that's the only plausible answer I would see at this point.
And the, and two thousand thirteen, believe it or not, is, is, it's not, it's not us, it's the states.
Right, the other one has been submitted for October two thousand sixteen, it just has not been published by the state yet.
Right. But we do, we have done it since two thousand eight.
Mrs. Stan?
Can I just ask what, if, you know, you don't have to give it to me tonight, what would that salary difference be for that permanent float person if we made her full-time with this, you know, as for full-time salary with benefits position? Like, what is, like, you know, how? You don't need to tell me tonight, but that would be.
Oh, I want to say it was fifty-one thousand dollars, I don't know why I have that.
That was two fifty a day.
I'm thinking.
It would be, it would not be much of a change in salary, it would probably be within a couple thousand dollars on the salary. But it would be the employee picking up the benefit package.
So, like, about two thousand, you're thinking difference?
Well.
For salary, I'm talking about.
Two hundred fifty dollars a day, times a hundred eighty-eight days, is what it would work out extrapolate to. I just don't remember the nurses say.
Right, and then.
Salary scale.
So plus benefits.
Right, that would be the difference.
Thank you, Dr. Braverman?
So what does a nurse that works in a school have to be? Could, Central has a nursing program, could we bring some of their seniors over to help out?
Are they RNs?
They will be.
They're registered nurses?
Uh, well, VSMs.
Have to have it.
If they're registered nurses, they, they can, sure, but you have to be an RN.
So you have to be graduated?
You can be.
I believe.
Mrs. Maraca?
I believe that, if you haven't, I'm sorry, we need, you need to be an RN.
Yeah.
But if it's an LPN, I think they have to be supervised with an RN, so you have to.
They do.
Right.
We've used, we've used LPNs for when a student requires his or her own nurse. But the school nurse needs to be an RN. But we have had LPNs, LPNs? Or CNA?
Only usually one-on-one for a particular student.
Exactly.
Do they need additional certification to be in a school, or is it, is it simply an RN?
Okay, it's not, it's not a separate certification, but there is a training program that you're required to go through when you become a school nurse, that they, they provide, that you, you pay for your person to go and get the school nursing training.
Any other questions before we move on to the next section? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, we are now on up, right back to you, curriculum and assessment.
So that is your next pink tab. And again, if you're looking at the left-hand page, the program goals are basically overarching to provide a well-articulated K-12 curriculum aligned to state standards. And to assess the impact of that curriculum on student groups and their students' growth and progress, and that's designed through our assessment program. It is a K-12 program, it is vertically articulated, even though there are different administrators responsible. We look at that vertical articulation in all core areas, and all on-core areas, kindergarten through high school. And the improvements that we're looking at are really going to be to maintain our five-year curriculum cycle for revision and updating. And then to provide expansion of digital. curriculum cycle for revision and updating and then to provide expansion of digital learning opportunities for our students as we're in our one-to-one world now. We're really exploring what other digital, uh, resources can we have. Teachers are accessing curriculum digitally now. So, uh, we used to put out, I don't know, um, probably at one grade level, twenty-five binders about the size that you have before you tonight, uh, with a mathematics or a language arts, social studies or science curriculum. We're no longer doing that. We're now doing those through shared folders or Google Drive in a shared folder. Uh, so we're trying to move that way. Program needs, um, is going to be to continue to support what we currently have in our budget, which are those curricular revisions as well as the data analysis and some of the assessment systems that we're paying for. On the right-hand side of the page, you're going to notice how that works out financially. In contracted services on five ninety-nine, uh, we have a power school system that is our student information system, uh, and that is, uh, part of that hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. We have an e-learning, online learning system called Odysseyware, um, and that is included in it. We have curriculum writing in the areas of science, as you heard from Ms. Freeman last night, we're shifting our science in five twelve and K to four to NGSS standards. We have our aerospace and engineering curriculum to revise and write, actually to write. We have medical sciences, two and three, few revisions into one. And then we have some curriculum-based assessments that are part of that funding as well. In six seventeen, the forty-seven thousand five, um, it comes out for PSATs. We pay for all tenth and eleventh graders to take the PSAT. And it's also our measures of academic progress or our MAP testing for students in grades two through ten, and those are administered as benchmark three time, three times a year, fall, winter and spring. And then six ninety are just some curriculum resources and supplies. So as teachers begin, all of our curriculum is written in-house by our staff. So there are some professional resources and training materials, uh, that we do purchase for that purpose. Any questions on curriculum and assessment?
Mr. Schulman.
Less, less of a question, more of a keep an eye out on, just reminded me that the state paid for the SATs for the first time this past school year, right?
They will continue to. It's the state-required assessment as is smarter balanced and CMT cap science.
So they will, I mean, they've already assured that that's not something that's on the cutting block from the Department of Ed budget?
So far it has not been on the cutting block.
Sure wouldn't be the first time the state walked back one of their mandated requirements.
I will say to you that it could be following eighteen nineteen because the governor only came up with a three-year agreement originally with college boards for SAT. So in eighteen nineteen is the last year of that contractual agreement with college board. So I don't know, it could happen then.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Braverman.
So how do, who's on the curriculum, um, committee? Who does curriculum? No, not us. I mean, teachers. I mean, not specifically. Do they get release time? Is it, they have a lesser teaching load? How does that work?
So you're not talking about the boards curriculum committee? You're talking about the, our district curriculum?
What we're looking at.
So the folks in the curriculum office will, will get together. So if there's, uh, curriculum needs to be written in science, they will post a, I should actually.
We do post curriculum writing tasks, but I'll answer the first part of your question. The Board of Education has an agreement with the Newington Teachers Association and it's very clear in that document that you have agreed to pay forty dollars an hour for curriculum writing. And the NTA continues to remind us that that is not their responsibility during their work hours, but it is really after work. What they usually tend to do is, uh, we hire a group of teachers who have applied through an application to write curriculum. They're given some training and they're usually connected with Wendy, myself, Kristen or their coordinator, or and their coordinator as they're writing the curriculum. That being said, it does get vetted out to teachers within that same content level or that grade level so that they can give feedback on what it's looking like. So all along the way that we're writing curriculum, we're sharing it back with the teachers who are going to be using it. So we write it, we give it out, we ask for feedback and input. The committee comes back and takes that input and decides whether or not they would change it. They do great amount of research. I think Wendy was researching for social studies and reading probably her entire summer last summer. So we spent a great deal of time learning what we need to know and then we use our in-house staff.
Mr. Sylvia.
Thank you. So do we have opportunities on this curriculum writing for, uh, to, uh, work in collaborative fashions with our other districts? Or is this just for us only and we just, you know, we're just doing it for ourselves? Or, you know, it's social studies curriculum is built so that it could be shared with other districts and have collaboration in that manner? I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to suggest reducing it, but I'm sure saying, hey, you know, we wrote it, it worked for us, why can't it work for the others? Now, and then the three non-certified positions, so those are not the ones that are writing, the teachers are writing, which are certified, but they're hourly employees. So are they also under the, uh, contracted services? Uh, line item, which is five ninety-nine, the teachers that are doing the writing over the summer? Or, um, I, I'm, I'm just trying to get some clarity.
That accounts for the forty dollars per hour that they would be writing in that five ninety-nine account.
Five ninety-nine. And then for the one twelve, the three positions that are there, so they're, what's their role?
Clerical and Tom. No?
Tom, Patrick and Katie.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
It is, um, a fraction of our clerical and then we have a power school manager. We have our data analyst and then we have our digital content specialist. There, those are all non-certified positions that make up this three.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Schulman.
Uh, I was going to say after Mrs. Braverman's question, Dr. Braverman's question and, um, partially in response to the first part of your question, that kind of got lost, the second part of your question, but, um, my, my mother has written curriculum for a number of years as a teacher in Bloomfield. And watching that process, um, and hearing about it around this table in Newington, it's one of my favorite parts about how public education Connecticut works is that the teachers actually get their hands in with the administration to write the actual curriculum and own it throughout the summers and after-school hours and then become the ones teaching it and helping their colleagues to teach it and implement it. And really is, um, it's, it's a really great hands-on experience for all of them to be able to be writing the stuff that they will then be teaching so that it really is their control over their own classrooms, um, and, and what they're going to be teaching the kids. So it's, it's one of my favorite parts of how we do things and how the state model kind of runs on writing curriculum and kind of, kind of makes me almost angry when you, when you read about Common Core and how it's, you know, no one has any control over what they're doing. And I'm like, I've, I've seen my mom for, for years writing the stuff that she's going to do and actually how it's, and that's how we do it here and I know that. And it's just such a misconception as to what the curriculum versus what the standards are, so.
That's why I didn't understand the question. For instance, the, uh, Wendy could maybe speak, there's a, there are social studies, um, area in the elementary, it's, it's really tailored toward history in Newington. And, uh, so Wendy.
Correct, and that was the example I was going to give because we recently did the social studies. There's certainly opportunities to collaborate with other districts, particularly when we're all revising curriculum at the same time because some new standards just came down from the state. But other times we're on our own five-year cycle and we're not always, um, revising curriculum in the same fashion that other districts around us are. In social studies as an example, a year and a half ago, when we started that venture, I brought the members of the curriculum committee to a training at the state level. We did connect with other towns. Um, unfortunately for us, we were out in front of that, so they learned a lot from us and we didn't get to, um, get the same back. But that's where the collaboration starts, you connect with other towns. We certainly shared a lot of resources with people as we were going through that process. But as Josh, um, so nicely described, that is exactly what happens is we then take it, make it our own. Our second grade curriculum is completely on Newington. Our third grade curriculum is on Connecticut with a focus on Newington. So you really do have to work with your own community. And you also nicely described another point I was going to make, that the teachers really need to be involved in that writing because everybody, everybody here knows that, uh, the teachers who write the curriculum know it best and have the easiest time implementing it. And then they are back in the buildings helping the other teachers implement it. So that's really an important part of the process.
Mr. Sylvia.
Uh, thank you. So do we have curriculum for our elementary level?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
Okay, I, um, so we have a curriculum that's set up for first grade, second grade, third grade.
If we did not, I wouldn't be sitting at the table. That is, that is a lot of what I oversee, yes.
Okay. And then, but we also then build these, what I call small go, we, I, I hear the terminology is small goals or, um.
Smart goals.
Pardon?
Smart goals.
Smart goals. Right. So is that on top of the curriculum or is that part of this?
That's a very different thing. A smart goal is really related to what a team of teachers sets, um, as a goal as they're looking to improve their instruction as they're implementing the curriculum. So for example, if they're in a, uh, you, math unit on place value, the team sits down and looks at how they're wor, working with those standards, how they're going to teach the children, and they might set a smart goal of, you know, our kids have struggled with subtraction, with regrouping for, for, um, the past unit. We're going to set a goal of how we can improve that instruction and then they try new strategies out to reach that goal. That's really an implementation of the curriculum, not really related to the curriculum writing itself.
I, I, so my question, I guess, more refined is, is, is the services offered under smart goal by the teachers covered within this contracted services or is that outside or under another line item?
No, smart goals are one tiny step of a bigger process that we, that our teachers work with in a professional learning community and that is part of a teacher's job. They meet with their teams every week and they are analyzing curriculum and looking at how they're going to implement and setting those goals.
Current defined.
Correct.
Units of work that they contractually obligated to perform.
Right.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, smart, and that, it, it's really designed to make sure that the, the, the goals are timely, measurable and all of that. So it's, it's one of our acronyms. And, uh, it's really just designed around a goal to make sure that, 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 that the metrics that are used are, are focused. This is really, I think, a.
Thank you. My, my own mind, I was trying to discern at what point does teaching stop and what time, at what point does contracted services start? So I was just trying to figure out if it fell into this bucket.
Yeah, and this, this account is really more about the actual writing of the curriculum. So the written curriculum versus the implemented curriculum is everybody's job. Every teacher then has to take that curriculum and implement it and it becomes part of their role.
And do we have a metrics? For example, when Josh, your mom, I mean, was she like given like, okay, uh, this particular course, uh, you've got twelve hours or you've got sixteen hours or you, you know, things of that nature?
Yes, so when we, when, um, part of the role of our office is to post, as Dr. Collins was saying earlier, we post the task. Before I can post that task, I have to determine a reasonable amount of time that, that I'm going to need, how many teachers at each grade level and how much time we're going to require to get that work done. And that's all included in the posting when they sign on to the task.
Thank you.
Mr. Schulman.
I was actually just going to tie it all back together with my mom since I already brought her up and if she's watching, which she evidently does sometimes, I do appreciate the work you do and I listen to your stories, mom. That she was rewriting, which I, I have to assume, um, was reading curriculum. I connected her with Mrs. Maraca, who had just finished writing some reading curriculum and sent her Newingtons, um, which was readily available because they had done it. So she had something to work off of as a frame and then her and her team of teachers could then turn it into their own in Bloomfield, which is the kind of collaboration that I think we, we probably use with a lot of neighboring districts as well to get what they've previously done and then turn it into our own so the teachers have the ownership, which, you know, kind of wraps it all together.
That is a piece of the research we do that Pamela was referring to upfront. Before I'm even posting that task, I'm doing a lot of research around what's expected at the state level, what's available in our own state and honestly beyond. I mean, we wouldn't have written that social studies curriculum the way we did without going to a lot of other districts and we use pieces of what a lot of other teams had put together.
All right, thank you very much. I mean, Josh, I appreciate that on the collaboration side.
Ironically, uh, you might want to tell your mom, until nineteen twenty-nine, we were consolidated with Bloomfield.
That's right. I just want to reiterate, Josh, um, my daughter teaches in Newtown, at Newtown High School and she was given the charge of rewriting the entire film production and photography program there in the curriculum. And she resourced, your teachers here, reached out to them and they, they just gave her some direction. So they do, teacher to teacher, they reach out to the people they know that are in and who do that, um, too. And she actually just found out from my younger daughter, okay, who was the teacher at Newtown High? And that's how they all, teacher to teacher, they just, they do that on their own.
Thank you. Are we ready to move on? Okay. Okay, we're on homebound K through twelve.
And I will direct you, um, backward in your booklet, not forward, to the previous pink tab. So it's the tab, pink tab, right before the one you were just on with curriculum assessment. I know. If I, if I could direct you to the left-hand page. Homebound instruction is a, a teaching service that we must provide to all students who, uh, require it, who would possibly be temporarily out, uh, on leave for illness or who have emotional or physical needs and are unable to attend school, uh, for a period of three weeks or longer. We are required to provide, uh, homebound services, uh, and that can be also based on or predicated based on a PPT, um, or an expulsion as well. You'll see that not much has changed, uh, within, uh, the program needs or the program goals. We constantly want to implement changes consistent with what the state mandates are around homebound, uh, so we are always current with that. If I could direct you over to the right-hand page, uh, what you're going to see here, if you look at the, um, actual amount in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, the very first column, you'll see the total there is seventy-eight, uh, zero two seven. And then as you go across to this year, we appropriated, uh, sixty-seven thousand. We've come to realize that that number is not actual, that we do spend more on homebound services, uh, than the sixty-seven thousand dollars. So we are going to need to add to this account to, um, show the realization of what we spend in this area of seventy-six thousand dollars. So it's not as if, um, we're adding because anything changed. What happens i- is we, we basically underfunded it and, uh, underfunded this account. It's always been the cost around seventy-eight thousand dollars. So this kind of shows that we're equally funding it as to what it, it costs to, you know, fund this program. Dr. Collins?
Yeah, as we realigned some things, we went tighter on some of the other budgets. We have consistently underfunded this, um, by the long. It's been about seventy-six, seventy-eight every single year. So we wanted to bring that in line. So this is one of the very few that did show an increase, uh, but it was, um, offset by something else. But that's a realistic number for what we spend every year.
I'm covering for Mrs. Petronio for a couple minutes, okay, Mrs. Stam?
I just want to, um, interject that I can understand that because I oversaw that and we have such an increase of children with anxiety who are getting medical documentation and notes requiring them to stay home for homebound. And yes, we all, we usually want them only on a short-term basis, but we're getting notes for whole years, almost, you know, year to year. And we require an updated note periodically. Um, and it's not just anxiety, it's school phobia, there's so, so many, and it's starting at younger ages too. Lots of times it's more high school oriented, but we're getting more middle schoolers. So that, those numbers are rising everywhere. And so it makes sense that you might have underfunded because I think a lot of us are in the same boat.
Mm-hmm. Sounds very familiar.
Dr. Braverman?
Uh, how many on average students are homebound in a month or two months or so?
That's a great question. How many do we have right now?
You're going to have another one tonight after this meeting?
Right. Right. I don't have the exact number, Dr. Braverman.
It's hard to say.
It fluctuates.
We could give you a number, but it would be very skewed. Cause some could be a matter of, um, three weeks, a month. Some could be, uh, eight months. So, so it'd be difficult to give you a number because it wouldn't.
On average, twenty, thirty, forty? Maybe?
Seventy-eight thousand dollars worth, so, uh.
Ten hours a week.
And, right, I'm just trying to do the math backward in my head here. How many hours, right?
Would that be forty dollars an hour?
No. No. I don't think that would be forty dollars an hour. Lou? The homebound rate isn't forty dollars an hour, it's curriculum. Oh, it is?
Yeah, it is.
So, they're both forty, forty an hour? Okay.
Anybody have any other questions?
Seventy-eight thousand?
No? I do just have one quick comment. Serving on the hearing committee, that's the first thing that surprised me the most is that we do pay for the tutoring for expelled students. I was surprised to learn that.
Oh, yeah.
It's a state mandate.
Yeah, we do.
We're mandated to-
Yeah, we would never expel a child without providing-
I don't think people are aware of that, so-
Okay, yeah, no, we would never, that would just be wrong.
Okay, so if there's no other questions, we can move on. Everyone all set? Okay, so we will move on to Supplies General.
Okay. The general supplies program for the district is our central warehousing operation. Third brown tab. Sorry, getting off to a bad start. As I said- Third brown tab.
Yeah, but, oh, General Supplies? Oh, General Supplies.
Okay, the general supplies program is the central warehousing operation for the district that is the resource all of the staff draws on for day-to-day supplies to take care of their activities. You know, it's predominantly based towards supporting the teachers in the classroom, so they will have all the art supplies, pencils, pens, Scotch tape, different types of media that they need for specific courses in the art area, as well as, you know, those general office supplies that we use at the central office and in the school offices, you know, reams and reams of copy paper, staplers, paper clips, hole punches, anything you need to run an office also runs through this operation. The general aspect of how the budget is compiled every year is John Brunelli, our supervisor, publishes the list of what items he will be carrying for central supply every year, and teachers will make decisions about what they're going to draw on through the central supply resources, or what they're going to ask for directly in their own local school budget. You know, there are some items that John doesn't carry because they're occasional need or very unique and specialty type items. You know, those will be ordered by each of the schools. John deals with the items he can buy through the state procurement processes that are all prebid, and it's just open-to-buy arrangements where he can react very quickly and make sure we're really never at any risk for being out of stock to the detriment of our staff. In addition, in the central supply area, we also carry the primary bulbs for all the classroom projectors. This has really kind of boiled down to just two models these days, and those being Mitsubishi and Epson, and we'll carry the top two models of each brand as our stock items, you know, and since these burn out and need to be replaced every couple of years, you know, the list is ever shifting as far as what models we're actually using at any point in time. The program itself has been static. There's really been no changes, enhancements, or major evolution of the program. One of the things we look at every year is our, the technology's catching up enough to where we could actually do a building-based time clock system that's contemporary in nature, where, because we have people who work in a building, you know, need to be at one place at period one, or completely on the other side of the building at the end of the day, at punch-out time, we have a lot of logistical difficulties in coordinating a effective time card punching system. And if we can get to the point of a FOB-based system that is simple enough and accurate enough to address all of our work rules, you know, that would be something we would address in the future. Other than that, it's really just making sure the program is adequately funded. As you can see, when you shift over to the right-hand page, our current appropriation's one-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-seven-fifty, and we are asking for the same funding level for next year at this time. Any questions?
This is Ancona. Is this the supplies from which the town taps into also?
Yes, but they are being billed for it now.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sylvia?
When you say that this is all the supplies the students need, the first thing that popped into my mind was the chatter and the cloud of communications that occurred at the beginning of the year with teachers sending out letters saying, oh, I'd like to have Kleenex, I'd like to have this, and then all the parents were out running around buying classroom supplies and trying to fulfill letters that were provided to the parents by teachers. So, will this money of one-ninety-nine eliminate that need for the teachers to send out these little letters saying, by the way, my class also wants the crayons, or this, or that, or all the other things? Because I remember, you know, Dr. Collins, you had to step in.
Two years now.
Two years in a row, right?
Right. And the first year, I just said verbally, you know, because I kind of found out late that these were going out. Now, this, these, to be perfectly honest, these have been, that's been going out for years.
For years.
Right.
For years, I've-
Right, but it started creeping up, and so you start to look at these lists where at first it was a box of tissues and this, and that, and some of these lists were getting outrageous. And this past year, so I said last year, no, don't do it, okay? This year, the list went out again, we're posted on the website, and what we were, it was brought to my attention somewhat late, there were actually, we had twins, two fourth graders, side-by-side classrooms, two different classrooms. One list was twenty dollars, and one was like a hundred-and-twenty dollars. I'm making those numbers up. Huge discrepancies, and that's when I said, no, no. So, so we look at, and there were calculators on there, those things are not, should not be on a list that a parent has to buy. That is the school district's responsibility. It is our responsibility to provide that stuff. Little things in the classroom, if you want a different box of tissues or something like that, I mean, those little things are fine, you know, but I generally use as a rule of thumb, you know, no more than twenty dollars.
Right, and so, wouldn't a message be better to the parents to say, you know, or to our staff to say, a suggestion that if any parent would like to contribute, make the contribution to the local, your local PTO, PTA, so that, you know, should, much like the Student Activity Fund, should a jersey be torn, or some extra box of Kleenex is necessary, that's not provided?
I think the principals got the message this year, I put in writing.
Oh, okay.
And we were very clear on that, and I don't believe we're, we shouldn't have that issue again.
All right. I hope we have no confusion this year because it was rather large last year.
It was, and that one instance came, you know, I think the parent was looking at it himself and said, what's going on? So, that's how I got with it.
And then one follow-up question on what Ms. Anna Connesingal asked. Do we know how much the town reimbursed us on?
I would have to go look. I don't see those documents that cross my desk every day.
All right, so may I suggest that we mark it up a little bit to cover the expense of the non-certified salary? What?
We're a for-profit business venture here, so.
Who? Oh, God.
Handling charge.
Correct, right.
Oh, my God. Other questions?
Five dollars.
Emily?
This is going to sound like a joke, but it is a serious question. When we charge people for stuff, that money goes to the town, so when we charge them for supplies, does it just go back to them?
That is a risk.
Yeah. Do we?
Right. For a transaction like that, we are obligated to return it to the general fund at the end of the year, so there's no incentive for us to do that.
Josh?
So, I'm trying to get a handle on this now. So, last year, we told the town that we would have to bill them for their supplies. We are now doing that, but the money goes, they send us a check, we have to then send one, or a wire, I don't know how you transfer funds, but they transfer funds somehow, but then it goes right back to them. So, we are actually still paying for the town stuff out of this account. That's, that's the general, that's what I'm picking up?
Yeah.
That is, that's-
Is that journal entry transfer?
Yeah, okay, we do it as a journal entry transfer, right. Yeah, the other-
What is, I don't know what a journal entry is just-
They accept the charge directly from us, so we don't have to actually pass a check through. So, we will get the benefit in our budget. You know, we're, if we spent ten thousand-one-hundred dollars for supplies, and one hundred dollars if it was for them, our budget would reflect ten thousand dollars. We would get that offset through the journal entry. So, that's out to the lower number.
So, the town is paying for those supplies in that, in that manner?
Right, but we have to win a check, though. If we had, if we got checks from outsiders, if we got a check from outsider, we definitely would have to turn it over to the town.
Right, okay.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on. We're going to go to Central Direction. Thank you.
Okay, that's the fourth green tab for everybody who's going by the color coding thing. Central Direction is the administrative operations of Third Forest Town Hall. This is the superintendent's office, the business office, facilities, and human capital development, and the management areas of the curriculum department. The activities within the program are really postage costs to address all of the mailings that are done for a variety of different purposes that are here, some public relations activities, printing of various materials and stationery for the benefit of the whole district, and contracted services, which, you know, is items that the district, we need to acquire because we don't have these in-house from the central direction perspective. This year, our public relations budget is reduced by two-thousand-six-hundred-seventy-five dollars, and the office and general supplies budget is being decreased by two-thousand-two-hundred-fifty dollars. Those are the two key drivers in the overall decrease of four-thousand-five-hundred-seventy, five, four-thousand-five-hundred-ninety-five dollars, you know, where we go from one-hundred-forty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-fifteen down to one-forty-two-seven-twenty for all these other expenses. Are there any questions about this program? And general supplies, other supplies, six-ninety account.
Dr. Braverman?
Lou, how will our budget look differently when we go to the financial chart of accounts?
Really, it won't look any different. The standardized chart of accounts is a next-level aggregation tool that they're trying to put together to eliminate inconsistencies in different districts, like we're using account six-ninety, and somebody else is using account six-ninety-five for essentially the same purpose. One of the two of us would need to reclassify it at the next level up to be able to get everything to merge into a common account reference that they want to have at the state. Today, the project really hasn't had the traction that's needed in the last year or so, so there really has been no progress on this at the state level for twelve months now.
Mr. Scholman?
I apologize if I missed it in your explanation, but what's the thousand dollars in the rentals for forty? It's new.
Yeah, it's unspecified item at this time. Typically, we have the need occasionally to rent chairs or tables for different events, or, you know, at times, PAA materials. It's really a catch-all for any of those unique needs during the year. You know, sometimes we need it for the art show of being able to put together, we're short on displays or other ways of getting everything up and ready for the community.
So, where would those, if we've had those types of charges in the past, where would those show up, like in the actual fifteen, sixteen numbers?
If there was any in fifteen, sixteen, showing, if there was, that did not happen in fifteen, sixteen.
Okay, but we're anticipating that that may be happening next year? Or do those-
I didn't actually write that entry myself. I don't, I'd have to go research the origination details on it.
Okay. I appreciate that.
All right, so we'll go back, I mean, we could research that, and we'll get back to that at a later date. Mr. Sylvia?
Yeah, thank you. So, under non-certified positions, I'm just, I've got to throw it out there. We were at ten-point-five, we're now at eleven-point-five. Do we have any opportunities to consolidate some activities or roles or responsibilities in order to try to get back to a ten-point-five, non-certified allocation? I know it's somewhat of an operational question, but it, I mean, we got by with ten and a half in 2015-16, and we're back up to eleven-point-five, and I, I'm, and I know it was appropriated last year, eleven-point-five, but I was wondering if we have opportunity to try to get it down a little bit?
I'd have to go back and put it back together for the detail of what's different to be able to determine what opportunities are available. I don't, I wouldn't want to speculate on that without evaluating it first.
I'm just trying to go through my mind about the differences and shifts. We've taken a corresponding, anytime we've changed a position, we've limited another one, so that's what I'm, I'd have to go back to and check.
Right.
I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's, I think I know where it is.
Are you sure there wasn't eleven-point-five in the week? We reduced one year? Pretty sure. I'd have to go back and look.
Right. I don't remember.
Well, the purpose of my question is to be able to, you know, make a recommendation to say if we could take like one FTE-type cost and move it back over into some of the other areas.
I believe we had a shared position with the town manager's office. We had a shared position with the town manager's office that we were, right, that we were trying, it may have been that in that year. We were in the process of, right, consolid, I want to say consolidating HR, we were planning on moving down that road, and we were sharing a position in the interim, and then it didn't work out that way. And so, so I think what you're seeing there is an adjustment of that, of it going back to where it was to begin with. That person went over to full-time to the town manager's office, and then we had to replace our person. So, I believe that's what we're seeing, but I'll check to make sure.
But I, I mean, on a philosophical basis, I appreciate the explanation. I guess I'm trying to encourage that we go, if we can find as many opportunities to share with our town services.
That's where we were going.
Mr. Scholman?
My recollection was that it was related to the removal of the administrators in last year's budget, and because of that and the restructuring of Mr. Farisi, I thought it was Mr. Farisi's office, that we added more clerical staff.
That was the other one, yeah.
We added clerical staff to fill in some of the things that an actual administrator was doing. So, there's- So, we met the cost savings of losing the two administrators, but had to add in a clerical person to actually fulfill some of those responsibilities in HR. So, I think the answer to the question is, we reduced monetarily last year and had to increase the number, one person in this role by decreasing positions in actual administration. So, to go back further would mean that the office wasn't able to complete the tasks that they actually need to complete.
I wasn't even thinking about that. I'm going through my mind in the clerical staff, I totally forgot we eliminated two administrators. Sorry.
I'd still like to promote and encourage that we would try to look for opportunities to share resources with our town where possible. I'm sure, you know, clerical is clerical.
We were very open to that.
In my mind, it's clerical.
Still remain open to that.
Where administrative is administrative, is admin, not certified, the non-certified. I understand the certified need, so, all right, thank you.
Okay. Go on to Building Direction, please.
Okay, this is the fourth blue tab. Everybody with me?
Yep.
Excellent. Okay, all right. Building Direction is the school management at each of the seven schools in the district. This is an extension of many of the functions of the central office of working with the building-level staff and people implementing the curriculum that's been designed, taking care of any of the facility issues and custodial issues that are occurring, you know, at that particular location. Within the Building Direction account, one of the dominant costs for it is the copier program for the district. Give you everyone a perspective, we're probably up around eighteen million copies a year in consumption across the district, maybe even a little higher. And one of the savings we're proposing for this year is the reduction of about thirty thousand dollars in that area because of the advent of Chromebooks. You know, so much more is now able to be done electronically rather than paper-driven, and we've seen some of those reductions occurring, and we think that's going to yield the, you know, pretty decent-sized savings for the overall district. We do have a sophisticated copier that's all network-based, so it does work, you know, very well in our environment of being able to distribute production and be able to utilize our resources for the benefit of the kids. So, it works out excellent from that standpoint. In addition, the only other major change in this program is the ten-thousand-dollar allocation for the upcoming NESAC decennial review that will occur in seventeen, eighteen school year. So, between these, the net difference in this program is a reduction of thirty-two-thousand-six-hundred-seventy dollars.
Questions for Lou? Emily?
As the students begin, as they've been using their Chromebooks and their, things that they have been creating and become more and more- and become more and more complex, uh, the things that they want to print, I know at home, um, are often in color. And I'm wondering what, um, as they are doing that at school, if there's an increased cost to, in color printing and copying?
Yes, the color costs are substantially higher. Uh, the whole network is designed, designed to default to black and white. So, a teacher who has credentials would have to override and request something to be produced in color. So, if they're putting a batch job out there and they say they want this in color, it's strictly based on the teacher intervention. It's not a student-based decision. So, we do have reasonable controls from that standpoint.
Except when they get home.
Well, right then, the, the home copier is the one that is printing color, not here.
Mr. Scholman.
What's the new five hundred dollars in the four thirty repairs account?
Which, which account, Josh?
Four thirty repairs.
Is that the laminator for Reynolds? Yeah. Right, July second, they, they, their laminator, uh, blew out.
Do you remember the date?
Yes. Only because I was, you know, if it had been June twenty-ninth, it wouldn't be in your budget. But it's in your budget.
So, do they not currently have a working laminator? Or?
It's in such bad shape that, uh, they're, they're just complaining about it all the time. It's just, it should have been replaced years ago.
So, it needs five hundred dollars of repairs to be good again? That's what we're saying? And we're not doing that this year?
Repairs or replaced, I mean, it depends on, so I don't know if that would go.
Right, I'm not sure, I, I'm not familiar with this one issue myself, so I can't.
I wonder if I remember, it's because I was speaking to a doctor, uh, who's owned about it specifically.
I'm, I'm, I'm just surprised that, that that would be the explanation because I would figure we would find a way to repair it this year since lamination's probably a pretty important part of elementary school. Or maybe it's not, I don't, I don't know, I just really like lamination.
They said it's still using, they're still using it.
They're still using it.
They're using it, it's limping along, so.
Okay.
But it really should have been replaced.
Mrs. Ancona?
I do remember, uh, Chafee P T A bought one, one year. I mean, I mean, they are, they're very important. They use them all the time.
Mr. Sylvia.
Is there an explanation for the ten thousand dollars?
Pardon me. Uh, is there an explanation from, to understand the, uh, ten thousand dollar increase on line eight-ten on, uh, dues and memberships? I mean, did C A B just raise their rates or something, or?
Yeah, that's what, right, that was, right, that was the N S A C, uh, decennial review.
Yeah, he did say that.
That's done through the N S A C organization. All the STEM review?
No, N S A C.
Decennial. Right, thank you.
Mrs. Ancona?
I, I thought that was redo- being reduced because at our budget presentation, we were just doing the high school.
We're only doing the high school, right.
So, that's just for the high school?
Shouldn't be in there. The high school is not up for this year. So, it was left in, it was left in there? Because that was something, if that's what it is and that, yeah, that would come out.
So, we need to check and verify that that is what it is and it's not something else? And then if so, then that would be removed, right?
Because that was a relatively late decision and one that took me a very long time to come to grips with.
Okay, you guys, that's okay, you can, we can look into it and get back to us. Um, Dr. Braverman.
So, the student handbooks, do we need to print them any longer? Can we do them online?
I think we took them out. I think, yeah, we did, we took them out.
Last year.
The budget's, it's still in the budget.
Well, you still have, well, there's still some printing, Planet Bright, but, but the handbooks are all going to be done online.
Online. Mrs. Ancona?
I do like the, um, the course list physically printed. It's nice to go through, you know?
I know, and, uh, that was four thousand dollars.
Wow.
Right.
Other questions before we move on? Okay, we're going to move on to board of education.
This is your account, it's the government's, uh, body of the board of education. You know, within this program, the major expenditures or funding of the S R O for the district, uh, the tracking and payment of the magnet school tuitions, uh, the legal costs, uh, for negotiations and other legal matters that the board faces. And, uh, uh, we also use this as the repository for all of the plans, proposals, until they're approved. And then they will be distributed back to the programs upon approval. Uh, this year, in the, uh, plans, proposals, you only had two that moved forward. One was the French course and the other was a marketing course for the high school. And one was, excuse me, one was grant-funded, the other was a no-cost, uh, startup item. So, there's, uh, no incremental, uh, cost in that area. Uh, the largest item is the magnet school tuition. You can see that we have over a million dollars of raw tuition, uh, costs there. And that is a co- offset of a combination of the anticipated open choice grant along with the city of Hartford waiver on magnet school tuitions, as long as they're being properly supported by the state. So, we have a net, um, budget allocation for tuition of two hundred forty-five thousand one hundred fifteen dollars. Uh, the S R O, we have budgeted up ten thousand dollars, but, uh, for this year. We do not have the firm numbers yet from the town for what they think it's going to be for next year yet. Are there any questions on the program?
Josh?
Um, so the, the S R O's under the contracted services in five ninety-nine, is that the only thing that's in that five ninety-nine account?
Uh, you might have the, um, enrollment studies.
So, the N E S D E C?
Yeah, you, you would pay contract service for the enrollment projections each year.
How much is that?
Uh, that's twenty-two hundred dollars.
And then the legal, right? Isn't legal in there?
Legal's under consultants, right? Three thirty?
Oh, sorry, under consultants, sorry, yep.
Is there anything else that's in N E S D E C in the S R O?
There's the K A B, uh,
The K A B policy?
Policies, that's in there.
What's that?
Three thousand. And there's, uh, uh, thirty-five hundred dollars for printing of a variety of things for the board, uh, each year. You know, newsletters, graphic services, things like that.
We've got printing under contracted services?
Yes.
Because we have printer contracts?
Oh, support of the printers, or is this printing?
Printing and graphic services, things for the superintendent's office, for the board, uh, for whatever, you know.
Also, you send it out to Kinko's or something like that?
It might be, I, I do a more sophisticated print op- print operation.
And is, in the three thirty account for consultants, is that solely legal fees?
Yes.
Okay, and so that, my expectation was that that would be higher because of our contract negotiations with N T A over the summer?
Correct.
So, is that, hey, and so I know we, so we do have a retainer.
I think the ten thousand dollars is in, in the wrong place, I think, because I, I'm, I know we had this conversation that we needed the ten thousand for that.
So, you're thinking that the ten thousand that's in the line item under, for building direction for net, for N E S and C should be in consultants?
Yes.
Because that would make sense to me, since we know it's going to cost us more money over the summer to negotiate.
Yeah. Can we get free legal services?
No.
Had to ask.
Okay.
Um,
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'm, the same question I had sort of earlier under the, uh, offset. How, uh, confident are we on the offset? Well, normally, I would say we're, we're, we're pretty close on, uh, I hate to sound wishy-washy here, but who knows? Um, there's a lot of variables here in that, um, the state is so unstable right now, you never know what they're going to do. The, the legislation reads that we are, um, the town is, excuse me, responsible for any part of the tuition that is not picked up by the state. And, um, so they could turn around, which they did in two thousand nine. I, I got a bill from Hartford for five hundred thousand dollars, just on a Friday afternoon because the governor had said something. And, um, obviously, we didn't have anywhere near that amount of money at the time. So, we, we really on, be on the hook for the whole million dollars if, if they decided to do that. The other piece that compounds it is as the governor makes those cuts across the board and they, they, I noticed are reducing the rest, that means that crack is going to pass on that cost to us. Right. That's what's, and that's what's driving my question is because I'm seeing numbers that came out from, uh, with Dr. Braverman shared with me. This, you know, is, you know, we got a forty-eight million dollar reduction. And, I mean, I, again, I'm, I don't want to create depression, um, but, ah, alright, uh,
I mean, we're pretty lucky holding it to forty-five.
I understand, it's the best guess at this moment.
It is, uh, right now, what I'm, I'm projecting, if, if, if everything stays the way it is, that we're short about forty-five hundred dollars. Um, that could, that's one kid, that could be off. It could be as much as a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, which is why I was saying we, we budgeted a little tighter knowing that we had that, um, uh, contingency fund now. So, if, if it did kind of go off the rails a little bit, you had some level of way to pay for it.
Right.
You know, without scorched earth kind of thing.
So, the contingency fund could be used to kind of cover the delta that might, we might encourage?
Sure.
Encounter?
As long as there's some left in there, or that's why we're trying to build up a little bit of breathing room in that account by, you know, difference.
Thank you.
Emily?
Uh, doesn't the S R O, don't, don't they have a contract also for their pay scale? I mean,
Yes, they do. They have, they have a contract, uh, with the police union. And, uh, we pay half of, uh, half of, of the cost, uh, with the town. So, um, we get a bill, I don't know if we get a bill, but we get a statement every year and, uh,
Yeah, I guess my, my question was, is it didn't sound like you were clear that that was going to be the number?
We don't have, we don't know, we, right, we don't, we, well, they get, in their contract, they get a certain increase. But their uniform costs also go up, their overtime, we have to pay half of their overtime.
Their overtime.
Overtime, whatever, we pay half of whatever they do.
We have some variable costs?
Twelve months. So, it's split right down the middle.
Do they work in the school system for twelve months?
They work, uh, um, no, but, uh, but it's a fifty-fifty split.
Do we, do they do overtime for us?
No, well, sometimes, sure, yeah, sure. Sure, not in the summer. But, so, the, that's why it's hard for us to say exactly what it is going to be. So, we'll get a statement from the town, um, and it's, we're usually pretty close. So, we have the S R O working at athletic events?
Yeah, yeah, some. He goes to graduation, he goes to, uh,
And that's covered by the student athletic, the student activity fund?
That's covered out of his, his salary.
The salary here?
Yes.
So, does the student ac- activity fund help compensate the extra time he spends?
They pay for police, no, they pay for, they pay out of the athletic department for police. They would, the S R O would necessarily be there. That would be open to the P D on how, whoever they assign. Uh, the S R O specifically does the, like, the prom, the, our, our graduation, tho- those things that are specific to Newington High School that are not general overtime, that just from the regular P D.
Alright, thank you.
Josh?
Um, I'm just bringing this as the second opportunity for me to say that in the six eleven account where plans, proposals are, I will be supporting adding back in money to the budget for the second STEM teacher at the high school. Because I think it's, um, not okay that we have the facility with, without, without proper staff in there for our kids to continue on and for other kids who weren't in the academies and middle school to be able to take those kinds of courses um, that maybe they now have an interest in. We have, going to have a state-of-the-art facility, we should be staffing it. I, I think that's a no-brainer and I'll be supporting that even though the town council may then say no.
I was wondering why we don't see it over on the left-hand side of the page.
I was also wondering that, it must, that must be an oversight. On the left-hand page, it talks about who to hire.
Under program needs, it talks about all the others.
Leaves out the STEM teacher.
It's because it was not a plans proposal entered for next year, it was from an earlier plans proposal? Deferred, it was deferred. Okay, thank you.
So, it was, it was an earlier plan proposal from last year, I presume?
Yes, it was.
But, approved and not funded. But we didn't carry it over for this year?
It's already been approved, so.
Oh, it, we already approved?
It's not a need, alright, it's a need to fund.
It's a need to fund, it's just not a need to.
But it's not a need, uh, that you need to approve.
Alright, so, but by Josh's line, is this the area where we would
Yes.
set aside those types of funds?
Yes.
Alright, um, yeah, I'm with you, Josh.
Thank you. Maintenance.
Okay, maintenance is the fourth purple tab. Maintenance, uh, program is responsible for the upkeep of the seven buildings in the district. Our bus garages, uh, the central supply operation, uh, and the athletic field house. In the, uh, scope of the, uh, size of the overall school district, we have a little bit over eight hundred, twelve thousand square feet of facilities we are responsible to take care of. Overall, they are in, you know, very good condition for their age and have been well-maintained with, uh, and have really stood the test of time well. The, uh, elements of the program itself are the four thirty account, which is the major repair activities which, uh, go on, which are a combination of hiring outside contractors to do that, uh, activity for us. Uh, the five ninety-nine account is contract services that we spend on behalf of the whole district. Many of those are building service-related, uh, costs and, uh, uh, standard services to some of our, uh, longstanding contractors who we know are going to be in all the time. And we have the plumbers in every week and, uh, refrigeration companies in every week, uh, doing different things. Uh, and then the maintenance supplies, which are the, uh, materials needed and consumed by our five staff members, uh, the working staff members who are, uh, three general, uh, tradesmen, the electrician and the H V A C, H V A C specialist. So, when we put all of these costs together, uh, you know, we really are in a blended operation where we, uh, probably do one-third of the work in-house and two-thirds of the work is contracted outside. Uh, a number of the tasks don't lend themselves to year-round, week-to-week work. Like, we would not have the need to have a painter on staff every week because there's no work that can be done at certain times of the year. And, you know, we have a, uh, cadre of, uh, companies that we work with, uh, that, uh, facilitate a number of these, uh, small, you know, hit-and-run type projects for us during the course of the year. As far as a standard benchmark of what we really should expect of ourselves for support on the four thirty line item, which is the, uh, true rehabilitation effort, uh, in the district. Uh, if we even look at a modest one dollar a square foot, uh, standard, we'd be looking at an eight hundred, twelve thousand dollar appropriation in that area to support that type of continuing operation. You know, this and that offer is, you know, that we absolutely need to have that number. It's just trying to put it in a context you can get a sense of. You know, if you're buying a, your residential home, you're paying anywhere from a hundred to a hundred twenty-five dollars a square foot. Uh, commercial, school-based construction ranges anywhere from three hundred to four hundred dollars a square foot uh, to build something new in the state. Uh, moderate renovation costs go from two hundred, two hundred fifty dollars a square foot. So, these types of standards, these are the costs that we have to incur to do significant work around the district, uh, accumulate to a very big number very quickly. So, uh, this gives everyone a sense of, uh, what that's about. You know, right now, on the right-hand page for the budget request, we're at eight hundred seventy-two thousand eight fifty for, uh, the contracting operations, uh, for the outsiders. Uh, we have a slight decline in our contract services account to seven hundred forty-six thousand from seven seventy-eight and an eight hundred dollar reduction in the supply area. As of this time, there's no, uh, proposals for any new equipment, uh, for the program. So, overall, uh, the, uh, budget request is a decrease of a hundred nineteen thousand four hundred fifty dollars from our current appropriation.
Mr. Sylvia.
Thank you. So, Lou, do we, um, the question basically is, do we have an idea of what type of maintenance we're going to need to do in this future year? Um, and in a manner that are we purposely deferring any maintenance? Uh, I don't want to be hit with another flurry of, uh, photographs of a facility that I don't want to be hit with another flurry of, uh, photographs of a facility that, um, you know. I don't want us deferring maintenance, is where I'm at. So is this request sufficient for the maintenance that we've identified? Or is this just a, this is just a swag to say, yeah, I'm gonna put a dollar a square foot available and then manage to that?
Half of priority one.
This is only priority one maintenance.
Priority one maintenance. We deferred.
We have three.
Yeah, we actually deferred, I wanna say, half of this, and we still have deferrals from this year. So, yeah, we're, we're quite a bit in the hole, but we have, what we have done is we have relied on health benefits money. So in your budget right now, yes, you're a serious hole. If you transfer money from health benefits into here to fill that hole, to do the maintenance, that's what, what we've been kinda relying on. For the past several years, that's how we've kinda covered it. Uh, it's a mad rush at the end, is what, what it turns out to be, but, um.
So our PSCIP account?
No, we'll transfer health benefit. We can, those you can do without your bathroom renovations.
Right.
So we've done the ones at Patterson and we have, you know, we have a plan to do them systematically throughout the, the district. But they have to be spent on very specific things. Uh, you can't just do whatever you want with it. So what we'll, we'll do is all of those things that had to be deferred. Um, we will take health benefits money and, you know, we'll transfer it over there and then we will into maintenance. And we will do those items there. That's how we've been kinda operating at that in our transportation operation as well.
Correct. And also, when you look at the list of the types of work that are proposed, uh, the list is fluid. And it's always subject to change. Even today, I had a call from the contractor who ma- takes care of the stage rigging. For the, uh, Newington High School auditorium for the upcoming theater productions. And he recommended to me that we need to replace some winches that, you know, run the scrims and the, all the, uh. Uh, the curtains and the sets that are there. That was seven, seventy-seven hundred dollars that, uh, something I said, we're gonna do it now. And not wait on that because we have a production coming up. And, uh, he felt that, you know, the need to do now. Uh, you know, was significant enough from a safety concern of the winch letting go, that we did not wanna wait on that. So that's not on any list anywhere. And I couldn't tell you it wasn't on next year's list because I wasn't anticipating that type of an issue.
But that example, not a priority one maintenance item, it wasn't.
It is today.
It is today, but it wasn't at the moment we were doing the budget last year?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. And you have to understand that list will change based on circumstances. Thank you.
Josh.
Um, my recollection from the CIP meetings, and I wish I had it with me in our previous presentation when we adopted the board CIP. Was that we were moving, the last two ye- two or three years, we've had three hundred thousand dollars in CIP. We were transfer, we weren't asking for that this year in CIP and we're transferring the three hundred back into our operating budget. But I cert- I, I don't recall seeing three hundred thousand dollar request for general maintenance in the CIP request that we made. And I don't see three hundred thousand dollars back in the operating budget.
Where'd it go?
Didn't we just create a three?
Right, you do have three hundred thousand in the request, but it was, instead of being general property improvements, it was a hundred fifty thousand for HVAC and a hundred fifty thousand for roofs.
Okay, so that's where that, so it was still.
So it's still in, in add ask?
Right.
Still in that CIP ask, although. Okay.
Your meeting's canceled, but.
Yeah, it's postponed for two weeks.
And I don't know why it's two weeks because we were told the sixteenth is when we had to do it and I'm not available that night, so I don't know why it was scheduled without asking us when we're available, but. Um, so if that's not approved through CIP, we've then just created a three hundred. Cause the last couple of years, it's been approved before we've transferred it out of our operating budget, which is why our ask last year at your presentation was much higher. Because we had all of our CIP asks and the health benefit and the, the, the benefits dollar in the actual percentage. I was just saying to Jane before the meeting that this, this budget's very similar to last year's when you take out CIP and take out the first health benefits number. So the three hundred isn't funded, we've just created a three hundred thousand dollar hole. Maintenance priorities in the district essentially, is that, is that accurate?
Well, your, your number last year was nine hundred something thousand at the start, uh, before the, uh, health benefits, uh, money last year. So we are a bit down from that. We're not, you know, we didn't have a cataclysmic blow-off.
But we also had three hundred in.
Right, yes, you did. Right.
So without the, without the three hundred, if the three hundred isn't funded by the CIP committee, we have created a three hundred thousand dollar hole.
And you're already. I wouldn't use the holes, but I would agree with you that we don't have the three hundred thousand dollars to fix the HVAC and the other category. That is before the CIP committee.
Right, which would just defer further maintenance.
If, we're, we're gonna have a, a hot climate, a cold climate.
The only reason we considered a hole is because it was in your budget to begin with, which was transferred, taken from your operating budget.
Through CIP?
So theoretically, that, that money should be taken from there and brought back, but. That's, that's, it's just cut. So in other words, you've transferred your operating budget, the money that you have in your operating budget to CIP. Which then is not under your control any longer, and then it is cut at that level. So you've, you've really just giving money over, out of your operating budget to.
So fight Josh.
Million dollars right now.
Well, there's, there's two million dollars to be cut out of the CIP list that was presented from the town and the board.
I understand that.
And it, it seems like a lot of the board priorities are, are pushed far down the list. And the fact that I'm not available for the CIP meeting.
We'll have to try to get the meeting changed.
Scheduled, so we'll have to try to get that changed, so I can be there if I.
Cause there's only two of us. Uh, only, only partial funding for the buses, I think a hundred and twenty-five of six hundred thousand? So, we've got a lot of work to do. Okay, um, other questions on maintenance?
How many custodians do we have?
This is the maintenance team, I believe. We have a maintenance team of five point one five, right?
Right, so right here, we're talking about the maintenance, not the cust-
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Alright, Lou, plant operations?
This is the custodial side of the operation. With thirty-eight point, excuse me, thirty, thirty-nine point one five staff position, there's thirty-eight custodians, the director. And a fractional secretary. Get to your thirty-nine point one five. All of the utility costs of the districts are included in this, uh, program, along with, uh, uh, uniform costs. Uh, rubbish costs and some occasional equipment costs. This year, the program is down seven thousand dollars for its request, a million eight fifty-three to go to a million eight sixty. Uh, sixty thousand dollars is being shifted from consumable utilities for, uh, electric, natural gas. Uh, and oil, uh, and shifted up to the MDC account for water, strictly because of the, uh, major surcharge. That, uh, MDC has put on everybody and basically doubled bills.
When you say surcharge, is this the MDC charge that's associated with, uh, Hartford not paying their bill, or?
No, this is.
This is just the regular water bill?
Yep, as a customer privilege fee for doing business with MDC, MDC, so. Everything else is really very, uh, steady in this area. Uh, our fuel costs are in, uh, good shape overall. We are protected for another, a couple of years on a long-term arrangement for the generation side of our electric costs. Uh, the, uh. Transmission costs, which is strictly CL, CLMP's operation, is limited by their tariffs and whatever they can get through the DPUC every year. So, uh, that may be going up. I really don't have any sense at this point if there's, uh, major concerns in that area. As Dr. Collins said earlier, we've been in green cleaning the better part of ten years now. And, uh, you know, most of the supplies used, um, meet the spirit of that obligation. And, uh, you know, you can see from the quality of the workmanship of all the custodians, they take great pride in it. And, uh, you know, they have, uh, made our buildings, uh, speak very well for us collectively to the community. Other than that, there's no replacement equipment at this time, uh, just accepting questions anyone has in this area.
Josh.
What was the cut, uh, new equipment, the forty thousand dollars? Is that the, the same?
Is that the chariot? Right, you think it's, it was more than that.
Zamboni.
It was more than?
The Zamboni.
Yeah, there was a couple of different things. I don't have a list with me as far as.
We still haven't gotten that.
No.
Great piece of equipment, that's too bad.
We have some good ones, but we don't have that one.
Okay. And do you have an idea of the cost of running our entire system's water off of bottled water that's not purchased through MDC or, or we don't? We don't price that out? Fill up our, fill up our water fountains with bottled water.
That would be an effort.
Other questions related to plant operations before we move on? Thanks, Lou. Next is transportation.
Okay. Next paper program. The school bus transportation operation covers the daily drive of kids to and from school on the big school bus. All of our special education activities that are in town, and we contract out, uh, special ed out-of-town work. They also do the bulk of our field trips and essentially all of our athletics, uh, activities during the course of the year. And, uh, you know, this operation is fully staffed in-house. We have, uh, twenty-five union staff members. And about twenty-five or twenty-six non-union drivers as well. So we have, you know, large staff and continuing of individuals that make this work. Uh, we have approximately forty buses on the road every day, uh, to handle the combination of regular ed and special ed work. Uh, typically, there are about ten buses in the backup fleet. Uh, but that's to guard against failures on the road. We have to run out and replace a bus on the fly. And a rotation of vehicles that have to go through the service regiments, uh, several times during the course of the year. So we typically plan on four buses out of service every day, uh, in the maintenance mode. So we have about six there for, uh, field trips, special events, activities, uh, as well as, uh, emergencies that are out there. Uh, we do have a number of other, uh, vehicles that we support. We have a few security vehicles. Uh, we have the maintenance staff that has their own little vans, uh, that they use, uh, day-to-day. Uh, we have, uh. Some vans that we use for, uh, uh, transporting, uh, kids that we don't need to take on a bus. Cause there's only need to take a couple of kids at a time, so we don't need to take a bigger vehicle out. So this brings the whole fleet size up to, uh, uh, somewhere in the eighty-plus vehicle range for us. Uh, fuel costs are really the one variable cost item, you know, year to year. Uh, we're in at a contract price of two dollars and thirty-one cents per gallon right now. Uh, the market today is about two fifty. Uh, we do have a little bit of risk in this area, uh, for next year. You know, I don't see a tremendous increase, but I, I think two dollars and seventy-five cents a gallon is a possibility. You know, the bidding for that will go out in April for a May commitment date. So we don't have a long window at this point to, uh, look at significant volatility. Uh, uh, in the request, there's also, uh, nothing for any replacement vehicles this time. All of this was deferred and put into the CIP request for the town. And the vehicle repair costs are, uh, similar to, uh, this year's amount. Uh, we're anticipating we can work within that appropriation because of the newer fleet we have today.
Go ahead, uh, questions? I have one, go ahead, Josh.
Um, what was the original need for the cut? There, there was two hundred thousand dollars that was cut from the initial request. Contracted services. So what was, what was cut out?
I believe it, part of it was a, an GPS initiative for the buses. I would have to go back and look at the cut list to see which ones are on. I don't have it. That's what, okay. I don't, can't remember the amount. Seventy thousand on that. Uh, I'm sure there were adjustments in the special ed costs for what our estimates were. For out-of-district transportation. Uh, and I'd have to analyze the account in the budget request to be able to tell you. Other variances and other changes since they were originally submitted.
And my, my second question is completely unrelated and, and, um. I don't know what, at what time this was written up the left side, but it says twenty-two students attending schools for special needs outside of the district. Receive transportation. Does that mean that there are a handful of students that are outplaced that reside? Um, at the facilities in which they are receiving their care?
Yes, there's a few of those.
Okay. So this is the balance of those students who, who still reside at, at.
In their homes.
In their homes in Newington that we send out, and there are some that are.
Residential.
Residential, okay. Thanks.
So Lou, our ask that, okay, so we took, I believe, si- is it six buses?
Yes.
Okay, so six hundred thousand dollars was for six buses, and we moved it over to our CIP ask.
Correct.
What, I just wanna kinda gauge where everybody's at. If we don't receive funding. If we don't think we're gonna receive the funding on the CIP side, what do we see as absolutely necessary to put in here? As to not fall behind again in our, the replacement of our list?
Right, so make sure everybody remembers this. The, uh, we will defer them. This is what, what happens. And then we get to a point where we defer, we defer, we defer, and before you know it, they're fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old. And all of a sudden, we have an emergency on our hand and we're buying eleven buses. And we wanna try, try to stay away from that, if at all possible. So if you can't fund six of them, you know, fund as many as you can. We've been, like I said, using health benefits money at the end of the year to fund a lot of this stuff, so that's where they come from. But it really is not a wise, uh, way to do that.
Right, the biggest concern really is the, how much they've tightened up the inspection process on the vehicles at the state level.
And they pull them off the road sooner than, right?
You know, and many of the inspectors are reluctant to allow buses over ten years of age to be out there on the road. Now, certainly, we have a good track record and excellent, uh, maintenance history, so they have, uh, greater confidence in us. Where we might be able to push a vehicle through eleven or twelve years. But many times, that's out of our control. If the inspector says this bu- bus is not going on the road anymore, it's not, and it really doesn't matter what we think.
In that case, we had four of them, so, so the state schools, there's a law there, that their buses are not allowed to be. Ten, more than ten years old. So at ten years old, they're taken off the road immediately. Can't go on the road, regardless of how, what good shape they're in. Have to be taken off the road. So when we get in a situation where we got, last time, where four of them were removed from service, we had two blown engines. And then we had the remainder of them, we had fourteen-year-old buses that were gonna cost an astronomical amount of money to, to repair. You get to, this is really isn't worth it because as, as they get older, those costs can, are every year. So you're, you're constantly paying a lot of money for these, these buses to keep them roadworthy. Um, and your inspectors are not gonna look favorably upon you. If you've got a fourteen-year-old bus you're trying to get through, they don't really care. You know, it's like, what are you still doing with this thing on the road?
Um, if I may? I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with this concept of moving capital improvement expenditures back into an operational budget. Uh, and, and, and I, I need to explain it only because of the amount of explanation that was provided to me of what qualifies for capital improvement. So the fire department has to go ask for their fire trucks, we gotta ask for our buses. And yes, we have to try to face the decisions of the CIP committee. And what they decide as a group is collective. So, so I have to let you know, I'm totally against trying to put funds back into an operational budget. To cover a capital improvement expenditure. The, the debate and argument, in my humble opinion, is at the CIP committee. And to make our arguments at that point.
That's great, but if it fails, what's the plan?
The plan is, we have to take our argument to the town and say, we need these types of, um, expenditures. To keep our fleet viable and to keep that, uh, argument in front. But for us to bury it back in to operational is masking monies and it's, it's not fully transparent. And so that's where I'm having my issue. The process has been built. We have to take these types of expenditure requests before the process before us. For us to then do a backside bury of it is not. It's just not above board.
It's almost kinda what you.
They're moving it back to operations.
You know how you were talking about mid-chip, uh, switches? So it's kinda the same thing here. So there's a certain amount of money that's spent in CIP all along, and we've always had to carry the, um, that cost in our operating budget. So I, I fully agree with you. They, right, they belong there. Unfortunately, they don't have the, the money, so that if they increase. So if they increased CIP proportionately and it was one of those things like, they have a lot of those that are mandated. So they're like the reserve funds, it just goes in there regardless.
I fully agree. I mean, an education to the public, whoever's watching, please. I mean, I'm, I am fully for the town council and our government to consider adjusting the current ceiling they have on the CIP funding side to address, I mean, we're gonna have, as everyone knows, we're going to have the bonding issues that are gonna come forth. We know the town hall is probably gonna be built, we're gonna have that debt service. We have other requests in the pipeline for additional debt service. And that's gonna eat into the current ceiling that we have. And in my humble opinion, it's only worthwhile that the town consider to adjust the artificial ceiling that's been placed on the CIP funding within that. Having said that, uh, I don't wanna run for town council just to make that argument all the time. I'm making enough trouble here. But it's, it's just, I would, I feel that we'd have greater credibility to keep it in the appropriate bucket. And that's where I'm being so impassioned about and I apologize, but
No, and I, and I agree with you wholeheartedly if we're funded or even partially funded to meet our needs. Before we've even had the discussion, it's been cut out.
I, I'll say two things. One, I agree, if it's capital, it should be in the capital budget. And two, it can't be in the capital budget because the capital budget doesn't have enough money. And it never will. Right now, there's five million dollars in pay-as-you-go money and there's not enough money to fund what needs to be funded. There's not even, I mean, we, we've been lucky to get a hundred thousand dollars the last, last year and I think the year before for buses. And there was five million dollars to spend, next year's gonna be five million dollars to spend. And there's gonna be, there's at least two million dollars of annual expenses and there's gonna be at least eight million dollars of requests from the town. Our infrastructure in the town is falling apart because we haven't bonded anything in a decade, thirteen or fifteen years is the last time we actually bonded something. And when we do and when we bond town hall and you see the projections out, even when we raise the cap of CIP, we're gonna be at levels of two-point-seven, three-point-three million dollars available for pay-as-you-go. And there is simply no money for our buses going forward at the rate that we need to. If we from now on never fund a bus out of our operational budget or health benefits money or anything, we will give up our buses in less than five years because we won't have enough to run our program. I'm not willing to do that. Theoretically, it's a great idea, but when you actually look at the dollars, it makes zero sense and it will never, ever happen. We are dreaming if we ever think six hundred grand is, or four hundred grand is going in every year into CIP for us. Because even the police department and the fire department, when they request their depreciation value, they don't have full replacement value by the time their cycle's over and they have to fund it in addition. And we will never get close to that amount of money. So it's great in theory, it will, it will never happen.
There is an easy fix. If you, uh, see the items on the top that are mandated. Um, if they raise the, the CIP amount by six-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars or whatever, you know, adjusted rate is. Um, and it was a mandated thing where they had to put it in, then you fixed your problem.
Well, from our perspective, but I'm sure the fire departments and others, as Josh explained. I would rather that we maintain our credibility and integrity and keep the funds going along the way. Our former administrations and our, and people for us asked, they set the guidelines. Yes, it's time to review it, Josh, I agree with that. But I think it's not, um, honorable for us to say that a bus is an operational expense. It is a capital improvement expense by all definitions given to us and then we need to follow that process. The argument that we have is before the residents of our community to say, here's why. Under the current depreciation discussions that we have, our fleet of sixty buses, uh, at a ten-year depreciation, all right? Says we need to have about six vehicles a year. Now, we're, we're basically current from everything I've been told.
Yeah.
Right? So that being said, um, we might be able to get away with four this year, but then we may, or four the next year. But we're gonna get back into the cycle of, of having to take it before the town to say, this system needs six buses a year. And that is, that is a, I can stand before God and say, hey, this is a reality. Now, if the town decides to say, oh, no, you don't get your buses, well, then the town had, or should I say, the CIP committee makes that decision. Then the CIP committee, in my humble opinion, has made the decision to throw our bus system out the window. And, and, but at least that's, that's a different argument for me to, to have instead of coming back saying, oh, I just found one million thirty-four thousand dollars to go buy eleven vehicles.
For one, just on point of clarification, the, uh, talking about previous administrations and their expectations and everything. I mean, this really conversation about buses being transferred over to capital is really only happened in the last couple of years. Never had it ever been part of the, should it have been? You bring up a very good, valid point, uh, but it was never the expectation. It was always the expectation that was carried in our operating budget. So that discussion really is very recent. Previous administration, if you will, um, took one bus as, as a kind of a cost-cutting one year. And then they did it one more year. So it's really, I wanna say, four years old at tops. Say that's about right, Lou?
I think it's only two years.
Two years, okay, two years, okay. See, that's very, very recent and there was never an expectation that, that, um, they were ever gonna take it. It was always supposed to be in our operating budget, even though it qualifies.
And I appreciate the discussion, Josh. Um, you know, philosophically on this, I think we're at two different ends of it. But, um, at least y'all know where I stand and, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Cindy.
Given all that, I just need to go back to another statement that was made that I want people who might be listening to understand. When we talked about the transportation on the twenty-two students versus, um, the fact that we have some residential students. I, I'd like it to be clear that we do not pay for residential, um, for students. We only pay for their education piece. So if someone was out there thinking we do that, I just wanna clarify that we don't pay for the residential piece, we only pay for the education piece.
Quickly, what do we do with our buses when they're fourteen years old? Do we trade them in?
We're going to now, we're going to now, um, because last year we, we, we sold them. To, uh, we put them out to bid and we sold them, we received the twenty-thousand dollar check. It went to the general fund.
We'll trade them in.
Well, we're gonna trade them in, we're gonna see if we can, can't get some trade-in value on them and reduce our
I think we're gonna have much more discussion on this topic in upcoming weeks, especially after, uh, the CIP meeting takes place, so. But we'll move on, um, if we can now move on to insurance, Lou?
Insurance is the fourth round, round tab. This is the general liability coverages for, uh, the school district. Your program has three primary drivers, one being general liability insurance, which includes, uh, accident injury protection on the property, uh, along with automobile insurance, you have workman's comp and you have property insurance. In addition, there's probably a half dozen specialized policies for, uh, niche coverage such as, uh, uh, public, uh, you know, the elected officials, uh, E and O, errors and omission type policy. We also have it for, uh, the medical activities of the school district. And, uh, we have one for, uh, that we carry on the PTA operation, excuse me, the Blue Stuk Club operations of the district. In addition, there's always something new and emerging every year as far as coverage changes. This, in the last couple of cycles, it's been, uh, underground storage tank liability and the controversy with drones. I mean, our academy operation runs the little half-pound drones as part of their academics, uh, that are, uh, over at John Wallace. And the primary liability carrier excludes that type of coverage. So we have to buy a niche policy to cover that specific risk for the district. These sorts of things evolve year after year, uh, as circumstances change, you know? Fifteen years ago, after nine-eleven, there was the terrorism, uh, special policies that we had to write and, uh, or had to acquire for the district just to cover those, uh, liability elements that are emerging year to year. So this year, really, the only change is in the drone area for that, um, uh, additional coverage we need. Uh, the policy program we have with Kirm is been excellent. Uh, we're a very well-regarded client of theirs. Uh, they are willing to give us, uh, lock-ins on rates where we have about a one and a half percent increased lock-in on general liability and three percent on workman's comp. We do also have what they call the, uh, still have exposure risk. And that is just like the size of your payroll. If our collective payroll is forty million dollars for the school district this year and it's forty-one million next year. The insurance company does have the ability to, uh, audit, adjust their cost upwards because they have a larger risk pool that they're covering. So, uh, the increase that we're proposing for this year, twenty-nine thousand is modest, uh, and in line with what the needs of the policies are. We have exchanged, uh, a number of vehicles, uh, this year. So we have some additional property, uh, costs for the autos that's coming online. And we will be insuring and upgrading the insurance on the STEM program at the high school when it's finished in a couple of months. So it seems we'll be okay if we can maintain that level of funding for next year.
Mr. Sylvia.
Uh, Lou, do we have any opportunities to pool with other districts, uh, on insurance side?
Well, that's what Kirm is. Kirm is the state-sponsored organization.
Oh, it's a state sponsor for pooling of all assets?
Uh, boards of ed, uh, towns, cities, water authorities, anything else that's been chartered through municipal or governmental arrangement is eligible to participate.
Alright, so we're already in a very large pool?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Fassella.
Lou, with our general liability or all the insurance, do we have cyber protection?
Yes, we do.
And is that, that's included?
Yes.
In this, okay.
Josh.
Two questions. One, did we actually spend six hundred ninety dollars on property insurance in fifteen, sixteen?
No, we need to make a correction, moving money down from one of the other categories. No, it was around a hundred-three thousand dollars for the property.
Okay. That's it.
It comes as part of a bundled invoice, so we may not have split it out.
Coded incorrectly when it was put in here, okay. Um, and my recollection is that in the last couple of years in Dr. Collins' budget presentation, there's been a chart of what's in other insurance. And also for what's in other salaries, you had really nice breakdowns. I don't remember seeing those this year.
Other salaries is coming.
No, 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 but he, but he had a chart breakdown on his presentation that explained every line item in other salaries, every line item in other insurance.
We talked, right, we talked, anyway, I was trying to pare it down because
You were trying to make it shorter and I appreciate that, definitely, but could you, um, can you get that, those to us, that would be great, thank you.
Any other questions for Lou on other insurance? If not, let's move to other salaries. Mr. Farisi.
Last night I had the most exciting tab and I think I do again this evening with this one. I, um, in, in what, um, was just shared in regards to a breakdown, uh, some of the breakdown is in the description on the left-hand column. If you look at the description of this program, uh, this is for funding substitute teachers, anticipated salary scale, uh, changes, retirement increments, loss of planning time, Connecticut sick pay legislation and special supervision in, um, that are placed in this program. Uh, since these costs cannot be easily defined and, um, and kind of, uh, a change and, and adjust each year. For example, if I were to share with you, uh, right now, we're asking folks what the anticipated, uh, degree changes are going to be for next year. You know, for folks who are in degreed programs. Some people finish on time, some people don't, so things can vary just a little bit, retirement increments as well. People who are going out for leave, sick pay, things like that. So those are just varying, uh, and moving targets. However, we do, uh, we do work our hardest to, to achieve the numbers that result in us being as positive as we can in, in this account. So, um, the reason why this one's going to be so exciting is because you get to write some things down. Ready for this? So on the right-hand page, um, if you look at the actual column for two, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, uh, you're going to see at the bottom, six-eighty-eight, four-seventy-three, everyone with me on that? Right underneath that, if you could write, one million, two-thirty-five, seven-thirty-six. And then, and then write that exact number again, right underneath the appropriations column for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year. Under the one-eighty-five, seven-thirty-six, write that same number again. So my explanation to you is this. Under the, uh, the, the two thousand fifteen, sixteen column, sometimes we see, uh, six-eighty-eight, four-seventy-three and we think, wow, that's a lot lower than what's being asked for right now. Um, because the original requests and what was originally put forward was one million, two-hundred-thirty-five, seven-thirty-six. And then monies, if you recall, always by the end of the year, get transferred out of this account and then get re-appropriated into the correct accounts throughout this whole budget. So that's why there's about half that has been moved out. Once all the salary, uh, anticipated salary degree changes actually happen, the retirement increments happen, all the different fu- you know, monies that then get pulled out of here go throughout and they're embedded into the, the budget. Um, so, and you may recall, you, you just kinda did this, uh, in December where you took a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and transferred it out of this account and you put it into, uh, other places within the budget so that way we could pay off some of the appropriations that we're speaking of. So that's why I had you put the one million, two-thirty-five, seven-thirty-six under the next column. And that reduction right there is your hundred and fifty thousand dollars you just transferred. Does that make sense? So the difference between the one-eighty-five, seven-thirty-six and that number is the one-fifty that you just transferred in December. Should I pause here for a question or is everyone?
I, I wanted to illuminate with an example.
Okay.
So Dr. Braverman at the beginning of the fifteen, sixteen school year was Mrs. Braverman.
Correct.
Mr. Farisi knew that she was about to finish her doctorate, so she'd go from one part of the teacher contract scale to another part. And she'd earn five thousand more dollars in her contract year. So because of that, five thousand dollars in that one-eleven count was, was earmarked for Mrs. Braverman to become Dr. Braverman. When she sent in her paperwork in October saying, I'm now a doctor and I'm a doctor in, we'll say, social studies. We'll, we'll put that, uh, science, we'll put it in science category. The five thousand dollars moved out of the account at our December meeting into the science-certified salaries account where she actually earned the money. And so that, that gets replicated for thirty, forty, fifty staff members, however many move degrees. And then Mr. Vassella at the twenty-fifteen, sixteen beginning of the year, we knew that he was on his last legs and it was time to get him out of the, out of the school district. And he gave his notice.
Although we begged him to stay.
He gave his notice and he's been in town long enough to meet the contractual obligations that he's entitled to a retirement increment once he gives his notice at the end of the school year. So he gave his notice and we knew that that was coming. So once he did and started earning the retirement increment, that money that was earmarked for his retirement increment moved into his, you were a science teacher, is that right? Middle school, moved into his, moved into the science account to show that he was earning that money in science. And that's part of the transfers that we either made in December or we then make at the end of the year as well in June. And that's why the number gets so much lower in the actual, because some money stays in there all year round. But about half of it moves into the actual areas where Dr. Braverman and retiree, Mr. Vassella stay.
Correct.
Excellent.
Illumination, wonderful. So, so from that, you can see then, if we take the, uh, one million, two-thirty-five, seven-thirty-six, um, that was appropriated, you can go to the superintendent's amount that we're actually asking for this year. And you'll see, uh, approximately a forty-two thousand dollar, uh, reduction from this account from what was previously put in last year. Yes.
Alright, so yesterday we were talking about the forty-five thousand dollars and the forty-eight thousand dollars on non-certified employees that were added to the five pillars that were basically the hourly employees that used to be under other salaries totaling two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars. So where's, where's the reduction that you took it out of this and moved it over to those other line items for the discussion yesterday? So to me, this doesn't look like a reduction. This looks like I haven't answered where that two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars is gone.
In the, uh, report I was working on today was identifying some of those elements and, uh, making sure that it articulated the essence of some of the larger issues that Steve has to face in HR uh, for being able to properly staff the district. We've seen for the last three to five years, a significant negative trends in, uh, absentees and coverage issues for the school district. and coverage issues for the school district. Uh, even Adam, Steve and I were looking at going back ten years ago, we had about five thousand absence days ten years ago. Now we're up to eight thousand absence days per year. So, this puts additional pressure on the need to acquire substitute help to go in and cover, uh, all the classroom activities and, you know, PPT, whatever the, uh, reason, uh, subject needed for it day by day. We have found our compensation schedules to be significantly, you know, under all of our competing districts, especially in the area with no benefits being offered. Part of what we did last spring was we made major adjustments in the, uh, salary, hourly salary scales, uh, to try to address this. Uh, we don't have, I don't have all of these statistics, uh, to sh- to share with you accurately, but if, um, I wouldn't be surprised if we used to have a ninety-five percent coverage rate ten years ago. And I wouldn't be surprised at a fall, at all, if it was seventy percent last year. So, all of these empty slots means people are doing emergency coverages and we're not really delivering the best product in the classroom to the kids, uh, that we need because we're not able to get the right help. So, one of the things, we invested roughly two hundred thousand dollars into the salary scale for the hourly help to be able to address those particular issues. And I feel we've made some improvements, but it's, I'm sure we're not back up to the, uh, staffing coverage rates that we've had in the past. Uh, you know, off the top of my head, what I was looking at, round numbers, uh, eighty thousand to two hundred thousand went towards regular special ed tutors. We had, uh, twenty thousand for ABA tutors, uh, thirty to forty thousand dollars for learning tutors and academic support tutors around the district. And I felt by looking at all the trend numbers that the additional, the last fifty thousand dollars was, we would just have more people coming to work and we'd have to pay more people to be here. It's great to run a positive variance on the budget, but not at the expense of not covering the work, uh, in the buildings. So, by saying this is an account that's really eligible for a cut, it's really the furthest thing from the truth. More money needs to be invested in, uh, maintaining a competitive pay scale for the benefit of, uh, the entire school district. And running a great positive variance is nice from an economic standpoint, but it's not good for operational.
So, Lou.
Just one more point I, I'm looking at it. Uh, when I put together the, uh, analysis last May when I did it, uh, during the fifteen, sixteen year last year, at that point in time, we had a hundred forty-one special ed tutors paid during the year. That payroll of May sixth, we only had ninety-five of them still on payroll. So that speaks to the churn and the inability to staff basically a hundred twenty positions. So we had, you know, a significant number of vacancies and a staggering level of turnover in these jobs. And this is part of what we need to correct and, uh, be able to support for a district. You know, the environment is getting just more difficult and the demands placed on the school district to support the kids, and we have to make sure our staff is up to the challenge and we have the right people here.
All right, thank you, Lou. I appreciate the explanation. So here's the optics that I'm seeing it. Last year we threatened fifteen teachers with layoffs, but in the spring we found money to give a raise to the hourly employees to address the challenges that have been explained. All right? The optics don't work for me. Yesterday was explained, two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars came out of other salaries to me and went over into these other five pillars. Okay, I can buy it. So if, if I take it and I say, all right, I take that two sixty-two and I put it back over here, then the ask is two hundred sixty-two thousand more than the one, one million, one ninety-three. So, I'm, I'm not seeing a cut, I'm not seeing a reduction as stated. I'm seeing that we gave raises to the hourlies, we threatened teachers with layoffs, and, uh, but we managed not to have to lay off the teachers and we sent out letters to the parents to scare the living daylights out of them, all right? We all remember the letter. I'm basically saying, this is high. And in my humble opinion, it's two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars high because you elected to transfer those costs from here-
Mm-hmm.
-to the other five pillars.
That's fair criticism.
Right.
Right.
So-
In trying to-
I don't, and I don't, and I don't question the logic, Lou. Really, I mean, I understand the logic. So, I'm just saying, I think this is at least two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars too high because of what I've heard yesterday and today. That's where I'm at.
Steven, you, how far, I was-
Right.
Are we eight dollars below?
Yeah. So, um, so, I, I hear everything and, and the only other, uh, contribution I can make to, uh, just some of the monies is that it, um, you know, oftentimes when we're not able to fill positions, that money is not going out, right? So, so the money that didn't go out, we were able to take and put a little bit into increasing the hourly wage. We are significantly understaffed, uh, when it comes to being able to fill these folks who are absent, um, on a daily basis. So on a daily basis, we're only able to fill when a special education tutor is out and we need to have a substitute for that person. We're hovering in between sixty-five and seventy percent fill rate. So that means we're, we're down that many, you know, staff members. And so, uh, at the learning tutor level, um, when we try to fill those folks, uh, we're at about the seventy-five percent fill rate. At the teaching level, we're a little bit better and we're in the eighty to ninety fill rate depending on, uh, the day, the week, and the month. So, that's where we kinda range, uh, and so we, we monitor and watch those statistics weekly and monthly. Um, so, so we are constantly not able to provide, you know, coverage at all times. Uh, that's not a great place to be when it comes to service delivery model. Um, so in hearing that, you know, this is a, a low account, I, I think, you know, what Lou and I are trying to share is we're, we're already well below and underfunding it, um, right now as it is, uh, so-
For instance, if you went to the district next door-
Yes.
What kind of an increase would you get?
The type, yes, uh, you would be around between eighteen to twenty-four dollars an hour with benefits, though. So even at the lowest rate, eighteen would be with benefits. Um, to give you an example of where we are, we were at fourteen twenty, we were at fourteen seventy-five an hour, uh, last year. Um, so our just inch increment to try to kinda come close was to bring it up to sixteen dollars an hour. So a dollar twenty-five increase an hour, which is a lot that adds up quickly in this budget, and that's why you're seeing what you're seeing. Um, but we're still nowhere near a competitive rate and that doesn't include any benefits, it's just an hourly rate. So, the, yes, that's where we are.
I appreciate the challenge. I just don't like the funny accounting. And so, I still think that this is two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars higher than what is, than all of our previous actuals and such. Granted, all right, the operation and the system agreed to give hourlies a, a raise. I don't like the optics. I don't like the message we sent to our teachers, um, and I certainly don't like this number. And I, in my humble opinion, it's an opportunity to at least drop it, uh, so I can at least go and buy some music equipment for another department for a non-student activity, um, and some other needs that we have, i.e. a STEM teacher.
What, what, Lou, if, as Mr. Sylvia is suggesting, you dropped money out of this account. What impact would that have? I don't think we're understanding the funding of what was done.
We'd have to reduce their wage, right?
Well, you, in essence, you would not be offering additional compensation opportunities to the hourly side of the house group. And I'm talking specifically for the academic support people, uh, the tutors, the assisters, the ABA specialists that are here. So if they get capped at a pay rate of eighteen dollars an hour, that will continue to fall further behind the competition that's here. You know, we have an obligation to try to keep pace with our neighbors because of-
I, 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 I think, I get that, and that makes perfect sense. I'm not understanding the money, I'm not understanding the explanation from yesterday or whenever we had it, with, with the money going already to the five other-
Right, one of the things we did-
And then the money that's here, I don't understand the connection.
Because of the chronic shortage that we've had in this area. Over the last three to four years, a group of, uh, staff members called permanent building subs have evolved, um, into our operation. And basically, we had to offer full-year employment to individuals saying, we're not sure what your task is gonna be tomorrow, but be at the building at eight o'clock and we're gonna put you to work. And we have eighteen of those, I believe is the number, around the district. And that was somewhere around the two hundred sixty thousand dollar number, uh, that, uh, Mr. Sylvia was mentioning a few minutes ago. I have, we used to classify those expenses in other salaries in prior years because it really is now part of the general academic support of the five major programs. We have done a twenty percent per program allocation of those costs into the five big programs, one twelve account, and shifted the expense out of the other salary account. So the expenditures in other salaries will be lower this year because of that. In speaking to the other longer-term issue of maintaining competitiveness and our capability recruiting and being able to have a better coverage ratio, by, the number Steve was quoting, let's say it's seventy-five percent is the average across everything, that's twenty-five percent of the vacancies are not being filled. And last year that was eight thousand days, so there were two thousand man days that were not paid for or not staffed by the district that we had planned for in, in our, our operation. And even if we take a hundred dollars a day, that would be two hundred thousand dollars for two thousand days of coverage. Of money the district did not spend on those particular salaries because people said, no thanks to our salary number, it wasn't high enough. So the choices are, either we continue to try to, uh, bump up the pay scales to make them more competitive, or we fall further behind and will risk having a lower coverage or a lower fill rate, uh, as time goes by.
So, the number that's here shows the moving of the built, daily building subs into different accounts-
Yes.
And increasing the funds for substitutes?
Right.
For wages.
Where, wait, where is the money that incre- I thought we talked about yesterday that that was the money that was moved. I thought in our last meeting, when we talked about the movement of the money to the five different places-
Yes.
I thought that was the increase, it was the increases that you just spoke about.
It was the, it's the shift, no, it's the shift of the build, daily building subs from other salaries into the five major categories.
Well, that's what was just said today, but the other day it was the-
Yeah, it was the same thing.
It was the increase in salaries of-
No. It was shifting them.
We started with the salaries, but it's, no, no, it's actually the daily subs, the, the, uh, full-time subs.
Permanent building subs.
Right.
Right. So for instance, like, like, I, in nineteen eighty-five, I started as a building sub. Uh, and every day I went, uh, you know, I, wherever.
So Nancy, my interpretation, excuse me, Dr. Collins, uh, my interpretation is if we were following the practices that we had last year that I saw in the numbers, then the ask for this year would be in, under, uh, other salaries, given the pay raises they had, would have been one million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Now, so, we all are, I'm of the understanding, and I agree, I understand the logic, move two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars from our past practices, distributed equally across the five pillars. And then I'm seeing that this is still somewhere really close to the same numbers before, so I'm sitting here going, we didn't reduce this by two sixty-two. We did a price transference in my world of saying, oh, we're gonna have these other departments pick it up, but I'm gonna still keep this budget the same. And, and so I see two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars that was moved to the other five pillars of education, and they're still asking for basically the same amount of money. I'm like going, uh, no, I want that, that, if that wa- if they move the two sixty-two over, this gets reduced. If we keep it at this number, then I would rather that this, other salaries be distributed to cover for the additional STEM teacher and be able to cover for some other, uh, a few music replacement items. I'm, I'm really stuck on that one, just like you are in periodicals. So, um, I don't have a problem with the one million, one ninety-three, but I'd rather have those extra dollars, the two sixty-two, that's in this number, in my opinion, it's in this number, unless you're planning on giving raises to all these other individuals that are still in this other salary.
Uh, this is one of the areas we're also looking at, we're, we're working with District Management Council, uh, to try to figure out a way to, because you're talking about a lot of people here and you're talking about, uh, a problem that keeps compounding itself. So we're trying to find a way to come up with a competitive rate, but reducing people. So, in order to keep it somewhat similar. So, we haven't figured all that out yet, we're still working with them on that. We're, we're, we're keeping special ed somewhat in check, believe it or not, um, because that also was a train that was out of control. Um, here again, we have, we're significantly underpaying people, we can't keep them and it's like a revolving door. So how do you stop that from happening? You have to try to get them a little bit, obviously throw money at the problem, try to stop them from leaving. And then ultimately, how do you kinda focus them by putting them into one specific area and then reduce the number of people you actually have to have?
I, I can appreciate the challenge.
Let, let's, go ahead.
Two things. One, you saying that there's two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars extra means that you, you didn't listen or understand the explanation of why there's additional money in there for the wage increase. I think that was very clearly explained, like, three times. The second part is, I think you're absolutely wrong that this money should go somewhere else instead. Um, the, the only consistent thing I've heard for six years on the board, anytime I've been with any teacher, is that they can't keep their support staff, they need their support staff, it's crucial to the day-to-day workings of the building and the classrooms, and they can't keep them because, I mean, this goes back to when Dr. Carver was here, that we can't keep anyone because we pay so little, everyone else has benefits, pays a lot more, and it's incredibly disruptive to have those gaps in assistance. The fact that we can't, are, are putting money towards that, I think, is, is exactly what we should be doing to help our, our teachers, um, exactly what they need. Um, they, they did explain it, two sixty-two moved out and about, about two hundred moved in, in these wage increases, that's, that's it. Uh, you, you don't like the optics for some reason, um, but-
Oh, I, I didn't make, as you can recall, I didn't agree on the optics and the, and the communications that were conveyed last year.
This has nothing to do with that.
It has everything to do with it. We threatened fifteen teachers, all right? We threatened a lot of other things in that letter. And my, my emotions here are, there's two sixty-two that got distributed to others. I understand the logic. We wanna have some permanency and some consistency in those five pillars. I understand that logic.
That, that's funny that was already there.
It wasn't there.
Yes, it was, we had the building, we already had building subs. The two sixty-two just sat in the other salaries account, it's being reclassified, which you like, into where it should be. They're across the five areas, so that's where their money is now.
But this number didn't-
It's not different money, it's not new money, it's the same.
This number did not go down, Josh. This number-
Because they increased the wages for two hundred thousand dollars. They ju- they just explained that.
No, I'd rather the monies-
And you're saying you'd rather it go somewhere else? That's a lot different than saying they didn't tell you where the money went.
No, they did tell me where the money went, but this number didn't drop so, in accordance with the way they redistributed the-
Because they added money in for a different, there's two different things going on and they just explained that.
They explained that they want to give additional raises to this group.
And that's why it doesn't show a two hundred sixty-two thousand dollar drop. They move two sixty-two out, you move two hundred, two hundred twenty in, it creates a forty-two thousand dollar difference, which is what they have.
Yeah. I understand the logic. I don't agree with that logic, all right?
And not agreeing with it is very different than saying they didn't explain it, or that it should be two sixty-two less when they just told you why it's not. They're two very different things to say. One is saying you don't believe that their math is right, and the other saying you think that money should, the two hundred twenty should go somewhere else.
I did not say that, Josh.
That's what I heard and it seems like a lot of other people heard.
Josh, I did not say their math was not correct, all right? So, but I understand your spin. My position is, the two sixty-two got moved out of a number that was rather flatlined, but the two twenty for your number is still put back in here to give everybody in this group raises. I don't like the optics where we're threatening teachers with layoffs and then I'm going out and giving raises to everybody else. And yes, I understand the challenges that are associated with a lower pay scale, but given all of this activity that's coming on over our state and what we're probably going to experience, I don't think we're gonna have too much of a problem of offering job openings and people wanting them in the near future. So, to that extent, I'm basically arguing, and I'm arguing with you, I want that, I would prefer to see that two sixty-two be taken out of this and allocated to some other areas that we know we would like to do, i.e. the STEM teacher. For me personally, some music replacement, but-
But just so we're clear, it's not two sixty-two.
So I'll agree on the two twenty, but they, they did not reduce this number to reflect them taking the, the two sixty-two out.
Yes, they did.
No, they didn't.
That is the same.
Okay, 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 time out, time out, Josh, time out. Lou?
Yes.
Can you please re-explain?
Okay.
Try, sorry.
No, no problem, okay. We'll go on the expenditure transfer.
We'll go on the expenditure transfer part of this first, okay? Because of the evolution of the permanent building sub niche employees. We had eighteen individuals who essentially are working all year in a substitute capacity at a hundred, ten, fifteen dollars a day, a hundred twenty dollars a day, whatever it was. That extrapolated to a value of about two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. That was what you saw in the budget pages of about the forty-five thousand dollars per program charge.
And I thought those were increases, I didn't know those were just for the building subs. I thought those were increases across all of our tutors.
There's that too, so that's also part of it.
That is part of that money?
Not that money, but, okay. In the other salaries account. So we did move out the two sixty-two into other programs, which is a reduction to the other salaries account. In what we did for the start of this, uh, school year is we advanced individuals in across the board pay increases in a number of these categories to, uh.
Yeah, when I say, I was not an individual, we advanced a classification of people. So it was, now I want to put the optics out there that were, you know, just really never give, give people raises. This was a, a strategic decision that had to be made because we could not staff our classrooms, where, and our people. And so because we were significantly, I'm talking several, eight, ten dollars below what other districts were paying. They can just literally go across the line. So by going up even a dollar twenty-five, whatever it is, it's not like you're giving them a raise. It's like you're trying to at least come close to being competitive, which we're still not even competitive.
We're still not.
Right, we, it slowed down a little bit, but, but, but not, it hasn't, okay. I thought, I, I'm not seeing as many resignation letters.
Right, and one of the major parts of that advancing the salary scale is you don't wanna go too far. Because those are not decisions you can back off from in the future. You know, once you make commitments to do certain things, you can't say, well, I hired you twenty-four dollars an hour, but this year it's gonna be twenty. And, you know, I, we'd rather have it where we're going eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Until we find that sweet spot of where we have the adequate amount of coverage to address all of these, you know, concerns. I mean, a sixty-five percent fill rate is pretty chaotic in the buildings.
I understand that, I'm trying to understand the, the optics of the money.
Okay, alright, in the, uh, dollars that were, I spoke to, you know, when I was, uh, starting to build the report a few hours ago. Uh, for this, I was looking at, you know, some of the other categories that we made the improvements in, which were the learning tutors. The ABA tutors, the special ed tutors. And in the monies, you know, if my recollection is correct, we had something like a hundred twenty-five thousand hours just for special ed tutors last year. And if you give a dollar an hour raise across that whole spectrum, that's a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars of money, so. And if I looked at all of the hourly staff, we probably around two hundred twenty thousand hours, if I remember correctly. So when we start looking at that magnitude of money, a dollar an hour raise across a hourly population of two hundred twenty thousand hours is two hundred twenty thousand dollars. And, you know, it can just get away from you, all of a sudden you want, need to get four dollar an hour raises. You need eight hundred eighty thousand dollars to do it, you know. So as we're trying to take a measured approach to improving the, uh, pay scales to be more competitive. You know, you'd like to think that you would have a number of individuals from the community that would want to work here. Uh, and, you know, the pay rate is really secondary to the opportunity to work with the school district. You know, economic conditions today really aren't that way anymore. People need to go out and earn the best possible rate of pay to address their personal financial issues. We don't have a lot of hometown discounts that are being, uh, given to us anymore because people aren't in a position to do that. So we have to make our pay scales more competitive to a- address those particular needs. And as we look at it year by year, you know, Steve and I will sit down at the end of the year and say, how bad was, were the circumstances in this area? Well, maybe it was okay in special ed this year, but it might have been terrible in the learning tutors because we lost eight teachers to, or eight, uh, uh, of learning tutors during the year, uh, to other districts because they were paying three dollars or four dollars an hour more. And these are the type of things we have to be able to react to, uh, to be able to keep our district in a competitive position. Now, in getting back to the money that was here, the answer from Steve's perspective is yes, you know, we took the two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars out. But, you know, in trying to, uh, ensure the board has.
Out of specific.
Other salary count.
You took it out of other salaries and you put it into.
The five big programs.
Okay, and that was for the.
The permanent building subs.
Building subs.
Correct.
Okay, now talk about the increases to the other.
Now, what I'm speaking to is we know we need to make additional modifications to our salary schedules to.
Right.
Get people in.
So is that the money?
That's what we're talking about, is prospectively what we need to do as the year rolls out, say, how are we doing? Are we in a position where we, uh, have to do something or it's just gonna get worse?
Right, so is that the, so is the money you want to increase these other people in, on this page?
Yes, right, but I don't have it defined as far as anyone, cause I don't have any statistics to.
Right, but that's where Steve's saying it should be less, you're saying we've built in that money here.
Correct.
Trying to figure out the two different, thank you.
Right.
Josh.
So the math would go, you start with one point two three five million, subtract two hundred and sixty-two thousand for the permanent building subs to get nine hundred and seventy-three thousand. And then you add in two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for potential raise, wage increases.
Right, we had a couple other minor adjustments as well. I know that with the change that occurred in the teacher contract for advancing lanes. Uh, that slowed down the process, we've needed less money there than we've seen, so we were able to, you know.
And so that brings, and that brings you to one point one nine three. So there's two actions that are changing the number from last year, one is moving out money, one is putting in money.
Right, but Steve's commentary is correct from that standpoint, but, you know, we have to recognize our responsibility to keep the district, district properly staffed.
Right, I, we just, I needed an explanation of the different pockets of money, I, I.
Did I do okay?
Yes, but again, as of yesterday, I didn't, forget it, I'm fine now. Have we beat this to death? You wanna move on?
That was good though.
Yes, that would have been helpful.
Yeah, or in chart form, and I hope we still get the chart.
Chart form, I, yeah, okay, thank you, let's move on to employee benefits.
Okay, alright, this one is, has good news in it, so we don't have to, you know, um, get upset about anything that's here. With the teacher contracts, uh, requiring everybody to move over to the high deductible plan effective July first. The entire, our entire pool was rated for participation in the high deductible pool last year. And, excuse me, uh, the overall gross rate for the health benefit plan is going down eight point eight percent for next year. Okay, uh, we do pick up the additional cost for the funding of the deductibles for the entire staff now. Which eats into that eight point eight percent. So we are essentially about a negative one percent impact in our budget for the health benefits for next year. You know, and that basically wiped out anything from medical inflation as part of it. And by restructuring the teachers into the high deductible plan. Uh, we've lowered the per capita cost of a contract on a rating basis. So we'll improve our position for, uh, if there is a Cadillac tax at any point in the future. You know, that helps from that standpoint, keeping that number lower. Uh, and, you know, we ran very good history the first year, we had about a hundred eighteen participants. Our first full year of operations in the high deductible plan. So we're in moving over the other three hundred, uh, or so for next year. You know, we expect things to go okay, you know, we're not looking at, you know, a big cloud of risk over the plan. It looks like it's gonna go well for us, you know, coming forward, uh, besides that.
So we have more deductibles to fund because more people are.
Yes, you know, you have either a thousand dollars for a single, two thousand for a family.
Okay, and that's factored in here, so that's why it doesn't look like there's as much.
Right, you don't get that much of a savings.
Correct, that's what we're seeing, okay, got it.
Okay, uh, so beyond the, uh, health insurance plan. Uh, I understand the ASME contract was ratified a couple days ago. And that hat will have a high deductible plan component. I don't know the final details though, as far as when an implementation date of that. It'll probably be second year of the program, uh, if I would guess, I have not gotten any information, uh, for changes to make for this year. So I'm assuming it's two thousand and eighteen change. Uh, beyond the health insurance.
No, that makes sense.
Okay, besides the health insurance, you have the pension obligations you have to fund. Uh, and, uh, those have been steady as they go from the, uh, defined benefit, uh, programs for the ATs and for ASME. You know, we have about a three percent increase built in. And we have all our new, uh, ASME, uh, individuals that go into the ICMA defined, uh, contribution program, which is like a 401K. So as time goes by, we're going to need to be increasing our contributions in this area because of the natural shift of people out of defined benefit into defined comp, uh, but that's, you know, manageable. Uh, so overall, I, uh, let me look at my notes here, uh, but we don't have a, uh, you know, a significant cha- you know, we've been able to hold the line, we're at twelve million, uh, six thousand dollars for our request against twelve million one hundred forty-four thousand this year, so we're down a hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, uh, for the request here. And that certainly has helped, uh, you know, fund the rest of our budget requests, so things are going as well as can be expected here.
Questions for Lou about the insurance? Mr. Sylvia?
Uh, so Lou, this number was given to us originated, uh, from the agent of record?
Yes.
Alright, so, um, it, my experience with the agent of record thus far and looking at it, there's a little CYA factor in it, but which is good. Um, but just so, you know, and if we keep having the, the nice, uh, healthy staff. And, um, we get the benefits that we've seen in the past, then I can see us having a, uh, a little bit of a windfall at the end of this particular year as a result also. Only because of the CYA factor, given the, the chance that our, our, uh, our team stays very healthy.
Probably not, we've, we've made the adjustment, we'll have a little one, but not nearly what we have this year.
So.
Highly unusual.
Different set of circumstances this year. Uh, in the past, the agent of record would typically give us a preliminary set of numbers, uh, prior to January thirtieth. Since Dr. Collins had pushed back his budget presentation until, uh, last week.
I think they're talking about in the end.
Right.
Oh, okay, so this, this reflects.
He gave us an update as of January tw- uh, twentieth, excuse me, he, he would give it to us at the beginning of, uh, January.
Alright, so, alright, alright, so.
So we're in.
My enthusiasm has been dampened.
Right, this is the number that basically is agreed upon now and, uh, this will, this should ride out, uh, pretty much untouch the rest of the budget.
Mr. Sherman?
I would also say when you look at the end, when we got our health benefit credit back in October for the year prior. The fifteen, sixteen year was the first year that we had a, a high deductible element to it. Now we're in year three, so we were seriously overcharged in year one, which led to a huge health benefit credit back to us in this current fiscal year of one point two million dollars. And the, it was almost level funding the year after and it's level, it's negative funding this year. So we've, we've been funded at the same level almost exactly for, for the full three years, so this should, this should, in the seventeen, eighteen year, we may still get a credit back, so we may still have been overcharged at our initial budget request, cause it was still in the year two. But this year three really should be much closer with the high, because the high deductible plan's fully implemented in year three, which is next year.
I pray you're right.
Thank you, Lou, and we're gonna finish up with community services. Is that you?
Me again.
Last one.
The finish touch, okay, community services, uh, the program is to reflect costs that we spend for non-educational expenses, which is the public use and community use of our buildings. This is when we rent the building out to dance clubs, uh, you know, any other organization that chooses to want to use our facilities for anything is paying a fee. You know, we have allocations for utility costs and any other direct costs of support. Many times we need to have AV costs added to, uh, an organization's rental, because they wanna use the auditorium. So you need somebody to run the light board and the sound system for their event, because they don't know how to use our system. So we have a few dollars built in for those type of, uh, support costs. As well as the custodial costs that are up on the salary line for covering those events and getting the school ready for school activities the next day. Uh, everything is exactly the same as it's been, you know, the allocation amounts are reasonable and appropriate and have passed audit every year. So we're in good shape from that standpoint and it's steady as we go on this program.
Josh.
At the end of the year, this is when me and Lou disagree for the first time every year for the last couple of years. There's a request for usually a three percent increase in what we charge rental fees because the rates go up for custodial staff and everything else. And I always talk about how this is the, this is the line item that pays that amount and we cover that cost in our actual operational budget. The money that we increase for rent goes directly into our public school CIP account. And I still don't think there's a good justification for raising it year after year. I look forward to having that, I, I think I only lost five to four in year two this past year, so I hope that.
Really just passing on the, uh, uh, salary cost out of the union contract for the custodians.
Right, but we cover it, we cover it in this account anyway. So it's like a, we get that, we get the extra, I mean, we have the extra three percent in our request for some non-certified salaries. But then on the other end, to make up for that, we ask for in rent, but that money doesn't go into our operational budget. It goes into our public school CIP, the year after.
Right, but otherwise.
It doesn't go towards the program. So I'm, I'm, I don't, I still don't like that justification, I'm still gonna vote no, no on you in May.
So Josh, um.
You agreed with me last year.
I did, um, s- so where would we like this money to go?
Well, it has to be in here because we have to pay out of our operational budget. Cause we have to pay our custodial staff for that time that they come in and we have to pay for all that stuff right out of our operational. So this money, it can't be moved out of our operational account right here. I'm saying on the other end, when we're charging rent for the places, I don't see any need to increase the rent because any increase that we see, we cover operationally already. And that money doesn't cover, it's, it's, it's opposing coverages. So I mean, this money has to, has to be where it is, cause we have to pay out operational, we can't pay it out of the public school account. No, the, the, this, the non-certified salaries goes up by fifteen hundred dollars. That covers the, that covers the contractual increase, I imagine, cause we have to pay it.
Right.
But we don't need to increase it on the rent side, which is a completely different. Not in the budget at all, I'm not talking about moving the budget at all. When we get to increasing building rates, I vote no, because I don't see it.
Right.
I don't see how it dovetails, I mean, I get that there's some maintenance costs to using the building a little more, but. I don't see a justification, that's just, that's nothing to do with this, sorry. Don't call it a shelving. Yeah, I mean, we use the building more, so we should charge, you know, a little bit more to use the maintenance, but I don't think the justice, I think you need to work on the justification when that motion comes up in there. I'm sure you, I'm sure you will.
I'm sure it's a top priority for you, Lou. Alright, we're gonna go to item G on our agenda, which is the superintendent of schools report.
Alright, so there's so much really good stuff in here, but I'm, I know I'm gonna go real fast. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go through it all, but so you can read that. Enrollment, I just wanted to draw your attention, we had forty-two thirteen projected, we started with forty-two thirty-five, we're now at forty-two eighty. So our enrollment has been going up consistently throughout the year. So, you know, as we start to look at those projections, I just want you to understand that when they were made. We now have, what, between sixty, forty-five and sixty-seven more kids. So our enrollment could be off by, by quite a bit there, if that trend continues. Um, some really good things happened, I wanna, I wanna address the, uh, the field trip thing with the police. Uh, I know that was brought up earlier, that, that this couldn't have gone off the rails on how it got taken down this path. This was a really great idea from Chief Clark, um, on community policing and they wanted to really bring the, the police into the elementary schools and have lunch with the kids and, uh, periodically go, you know, go with the kindergarteners to the pumpkin patch or whatever it is. This is not in any way, shape or form, um, a, a need to have security. Um, I think they just wrote it up in police talk possibly, and I think it really scared people for no reason. It was really, really meant, uh, sincerely from the police department as, as a way of, of working with our elementary schools to get to know them, the kids love them, you know. That, that's really all it was, and so I wanna make sure that people, uh, walk away with that understanding, that that's what that was all about. Nothing to do with, with security, nothing, anything like that. Um, the other thing on the kindergarten bus stops, I will look into that, we, we do stop at every kindergarten house. It is possible, if there is a street, I'll look into, uh, uh, what Rose was talking about. On a street, there could be three kindergartners conceivably who live there, um, and so we tend, tend to pick them up at their houses. Um, so that could be, I'll check into it. The tech bus, we, I wanna give you an update on that, it has been a very slow, uh, process because we've been doing the work ourselves in our spare time. But I, I took it out today. it out today for a spin, um, it's still a hollow shell, you know, but I took it over to Patterson, and a teacher came out and got on it and got really excited, it's all clean now, and there's nothing in it yet, um, but, uh, Jay believes he has a sponsor. Um, so if so, then we will have it loaded with all sorts of technology, and they'll do a bus wrap on it and everything like that, so it'll, um, but she was all excited to see an empty, a shell of a bus. Uh, that was, I thought, good news. The stem facility, I was in, again, this afternoon, I go over there all the time, I'll, I'll send you some pictures of it, it, it's, it's really, really shaving up nicely, kitchen looks beautiful, the dining room is, is magnificent, and, um, we're gonna have virtual reality room there, I mean, it's really, really, really neat, you won't even recognize it, but I'll send some pictures out to you. So, good, really good stuff going on.
Steve?
Um, do we have an update on the, the finalization on the John Wallace Middle School gym? I mean, did we get the bleachers, everything?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought I sent a update out, yeah, it's, uh, yeah, it looks fantastic.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, the bleachers are beautiful, um, gym looks, it's all brand new, really nice.
Thank you. We're gonna move to item H on our agenda, which is public participation, again, on any matter related to board responsibilities. If you could please state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Scott Kraskowski, forty-six Miami Avenue. I was not planning on talking tonight, um, the only reason I came out was to actually hear the meeting, listening to it on a laptop at home is kinda hard, especially when you have kids, dogs, and a wife. Um, so, uh, the reason I'm up here speaking tonight is because, uh, I heard Steve talking earlier, and, uh, I actually broadcast the Newington Police, Fire, and EMS services on the internet for people to listen to on their phones and online and stuff like that. And I never really gave it any thought about these, but these are actually wireless transmitters. Um, and I was sitting over here just not knowing what the system is, but, uh, I'm kinda guessing, because communication's my specialty, unfortunately, uh, th- this is not Bluetooth. Um, Bluetooth unfortunately has a, um, if you try listen, if you tried watching, I, I'm, I'm working on something with Dish Network right now, and, and working with the, the guys from Dolby Laboratories, um, for Bluetooth headphones, we're watching Dish Network service with it, and there's a delay, about a thousand millisecond delay inherent in Bluetooth. Um, so that way, right now you can't watch a movie using Bluetooth headphones because the lips don't match what you're hearing in your headphones. So this is just a pure transmit system, and if I had to guess, you probably have limited amount of microphones that can be turned on at a time, um, which means each microphone, when you turn it on, it goes and grabs the next available channel available for it, um, which means that theoretically it's possible, I don't think it's a digital system because I've heard some static in it, um, but anybody with a police scanner within the range of it, and the range could be out in the parking lot, who knows, it could be a mile away, as, if you have a good enough antenna, you could be a mile away and probably pick up these microphones. Um, so it is theoretically possible that people can listen to these microphones without being in the building, so I would be, uh, coherent of that, and I just wanted to pass that along, it's not a Bluetooth thing, it's nothing the police department can do, uh, people who buy scanners, just go down to Radio Shack and buy them, you don't have to register them with, uh, the police department or anything like that, and, uh, a lot of people have them, and, and, uh, they're expensive, to listen to the Newington Police Department requires about a seven hundred dollar scanner. And, uh, as I say, I broadcast to fire, police, and EMS services, uh, for people because they can't afford the scanners, and, uh, I actually work with Chief Clark on it, he knows, you know, we, we do some things with it, but, I won't go into those details, but I, it is possible, these are just transmitters. So if you're having an executive meeting, make sure your red light is not on, that's my best advice there. Also, one more thing, every time I get up here and talk now, I get a letter at home thanking me for coming and talking, and I understand it costs a town about twelve dollars and fifty cents for that, so you don't need to send me a letter, I'm just happy to be here. Thanks and good night.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to come forward? And the phone number, uh, if anyone would like to call in, eight six zero six six five eight seven three six. Seeing nobody calling in, we're gonna move to, um, item I, which is remarks by board members, we'll start with Paul and go around.
Again, I'd just like to thank all of the work that went into this budget presentation, the amount of time that the staff put into it, the dedication of our leaders that showed up and sat and discussed the budget with everybody, I know it's as much time and effort for them, but it's, and we do appreciate it, it clarifies all of what we need to do with the budget, so, just a thank you to everybody there.
Dill, to what Mr. Sulla said, and also, it's a more genteel process this time, so kudos to everybody at the table, it was good, thank you.
Bob, all set? Emily?
Also, the same, thank you to everybody for all the work that you put into preparing that, um, large book for all of us to pick through and to answer, to spend the time to answer all of our questions, you guys are experts on it, we are not, so we appreciate the explanations that you provide, thank you everyone here for the questions that you've asked, um, and the information that we've been brought out because of the conversation. Um, and lastly, I wanna say, thank you Dr. Collins for canceling school already so that I don't have to get that phone call at six o'clock tomorrow morning and-
On four different phones.
And then two text messages at four, so-
Right, right, we get nine alerts.
I know, there's many parents out there that are, um-
Grateful.
-grateful for that, and many children out there who will be grateful to be playing in the snow tomorrow, so thank you.
Um, I can always reiterate what Paul and Emily have said, thank you. Um, I know the effort has been substantial, I do appreciate, uh, the conversation and the dialogue, and for everybody at the table listening to my emotions. Um, but to that end, thank you very much, I really do appreciate the job and the effort you put forth on this.
Blessing.
And, uh, I do reiterate what Emily says, thank you Dr. Collins, I'm sure we've got four thousand three hundred students that are, and rela- and, uh, the, uh, parents allotted to those four thousand three hundred are, uh, rather happy to have the notice, thank you.
Just to reiterate what everyone else said, thank you for the time, thank you for the time for being here tonight, last night, and the time that you put into this, and it, it, it feels smoother, it feels better this year, and I appreciate that, thank you. And definitely the snow day, people are excited about that.
Okay, four things, I got a text while we were here that, uh, I have a snow day tomorrow because the courts are closed, which is fantastic. Um, two, uh, I'm saving my thanks still, uh, until the end of the budget process, I don't know why everyone's thanking you already, there's a lot of work to be done, um, I, I do appreciate the work that you're gonna do the rest of this week, getting the rest of those requests mostly by me, um, and charts and things like that, um, and I hope that those go online as well as part of our budget docs for everyone to get a fuller understanding of what we do. Uh, number three out of four, I read that police post, um, on Facebook, or maybe it was the Newington Public Schools, but I got really excited by it, um, I think that is one of the most important things that a police, um, department can do in a community, and is so sorely needed, um, in the times that we're having to create more trust between the community and the police, and, and, and they should be part of our schools, it should be a, a real community thing, and I, I'm sure the police officers are loving it as much as our kids are. Uh, and four out of four, uh, happy note, it's almost musical time again in Newington, uh, which is exciting, and if someone could get a message to Ms. Kucha at Martin Kellogg, she had previously asked me in the fall if I'd wanna help out, um, with their mail leads because they're doing Once Upon a Mattress, which I did my senior year of high school, and I haven't heard from her, and I, I would-
Oh, I think they did it without you, because we already got that invitation in the mail.
Invitation for what?
That play, it came last, yesterday.
Oh, I didn't, well, I didn't get that, but I was talking about not going to the play, but actually, she invited me to come, like, help mentor the kids, I know they are, and I just realized that, and, and I can make some time to, I can, I can get out of work to come and do that, and would love to, and, um, because I love that show and can't wait to see it, but now I don't know why I didn't get an invitation for the tickets either.
At this, as Dr. Collins just said. Jane?
Well, it's late, there's not more I can say than, it's already been said, I just wanna say, as a mom, thank you to everyone for their care and concern and passion for our students, that's number one, thank you.
Yes, thank you, everybody, this was, um, I think it was a good conversation, it needed conversation, it went very smoothly, appreciate all the work that's gone in, and Jane, you, you hit it right, I'm a mom of three in this system, and, uh, I'm continually impressed, every day, so thank you. And with, oh, with that, um, we're gonna adjourn because we have another meeting, people. And we are adjourned at ten twenty-three.